It's Pastor Clarence Reed in the audience. It is now eighteen hundred hours. I'm going to call this regular council meeting twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six to order. The invocation will be, it's Pastor Clarence Reed in the audience. The invocation will be provided by Dr. Robinson, our deputy city manager. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by our Boy Scout troop number five twenty. Will you all please rise?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you in Jesus's name today. We ask for your strength. We ask for your wisdom as we meet today to deal with city matters. We ask that you allow us to build and continue to thrive as a community. But thank you for prospering us as a community as we work and collaborate together on various projects and initiatives to move the city forward. But thank you, God, for giving us wisdom and understanding governing this meeting today. We trust you to guide us with your plans because you have plans that you have for us before the foundation of the world. And we put our trust in you today and will heartily ask you for your help and your insight today as we ask for your lead-in. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Guys, come up to the mic. Bring the microphone down for you. Good job. Go ahead, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoorah. Thank you, guys. So, Madam Jones, roll call.
Mayor Medina.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Present.
Councilman Johnson is by phone. Councilman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Hammer.
Present.
Councilman Landjevan.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. So before we get started, I just want to read the decorum statement. The city council permits and encourages comments from public to preserve order and decorum. The following rules apply. Please make sure you fill out a speaker card available in the front of the city clerk. And the clerk will give it to our deputy mayor. When called, come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name, address, and carry on. Each person shall be limited to three minutes and only allowed to speak once. Just wanted to highlight that. And then the speaker that shall be able to speak for three minutes. Time may not be donated to another speaker, so you can't yield someone else's time to whoever's speaking. It's every speaker gets three minutes. Direct your comments to the city council and not individual council members, staff or members of the public. You can direct your comments to the mayor. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from shouting, using threatening language, and violating rules of order, including for agenda items limiting the comments to the subject of the item that we're addressing. Violations of these rules may result in an issuance of verbal warnings. If violations continues, violators may be removed from these council chambers. A speaker may not be removed merely because of the content of their speech. With that being said, we are now on agenda revisions. Mr. Morton. Yes, sir.
I apologize for an incorrect citation. I'm trying to get the correct project. Okay. The item number six.
Okay, on the mic.
The applicant for item number six under public hearings has requested that the case be continued to a date certain, which would be the November sixth regular council meeting.
Item six to be continued under public hearing. I need a motion.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Carry on.
Item number two, under new business, consideration of temporarily closing the lift turned median breaks on Malabar between San Filippo and Interstate ninety-five. You're asking for that to be withdrawn, and we will bring it back to a future meeting.
Still moved. Second.
I don't think I need a motion, but I'll carry on with that.
Lastly, we're requesting to move the two items under new business, number three and number four, both related to our bargaining agreement with National Association of Government Employees, NAGE Blue and respectively NAGE White. And I'd like to move those up in front of public comment if possible. We have several members here tonight that start their day at three or four in the morning. We'd like to get them home and thank them for being here tonight.
I need a motion for that.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammer, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes unanimously. We are, we're moving items three and four on the new business to right before public comments after presentations. Okay. Madam Smith.
Yes, sir. The resolution for item one under new business has been updated with minor revisions and and it's included in the agenda packet.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, any revisions?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to ask council to move public hearings one and two before public comments before the NAGE Blue. New business items.
Okay. I got a motion, or that's a motion.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I got a motion. Hold on a second. I'm organizing this Councilman Johnson for a second. I got a motion for new business item one. Well, number two was withdrawn.
I'm sorry, public. I want to move the public hearings, public hearings one and two.
Oh, okay.
Before after presentations, before NAGE Blue.
Before NAGE Blue.
Yeah.
Public hearings, item one and two. I got a motion by Deputy Mayor and a second by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Just one other revision. I'd like to move new business item number one to the end of new business to be the last item to be heard under new business.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second to move new business item number one down. Well, it'll be the only item because three and four are three and four already moved up. Is there a five here? Let me check. Oh, all the way down to eight? So it'll be down to new business as in a place of new business eight, right? Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes four one. I'm nae on that. I would have preferred to do it sooner, but. Okay, does that conclude all the all the revisions, gentlemen? Anyone else? Okay, we're now on proclamations and recognitions. So I'd like to welcome up Dana Packard and Sandy from Serene Harbor. Come on up, guys. It's great to see so many smiling faces today. Hey, guys. Thanks for being here. So you may be wondering why at least some of us are in purple. I can tell you that I get phone calls for the month of October to always wear purple. So I am honored to do so. It is hereby proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, where nearly one in four women and one in nine men in our country have suffered physical violence by an intimate partner. And domestic violence impacts people of every age, ethnicities, nationality, economic status, and belief. And whereas victims of domestic violence are deprived of autonomy and security and face threats to their health and safety, and in many instances finds themselves left with significant financial insecurity. And whereas crimes like domestic violence inhibit our community from reaching its fullest potential, and although great progress in bringing awareness to and providing protections against domestic violence has been made, much work still remains. And whereas Palm Bay Police Department's Victim Service Unit directs efforts to address disturbing statistics regarding domestic violence, advocates for tougher sentences on domestic violence cases, law enforcement, and local domestic violence service providers such as Serene Harbor to ensure that victims of domestic violence do not experience further harassment or abuse. And whereas the Palm Bay Police Department's Victim Service Unit celebrates its twenty-seventh anniversary and its significant contribution to this cause by being the first advocacy program to be part of a first responder team right here in Brevard County. Whereas the city reaffirms its dedication to providing a community where no one suffers the pain and hardship caused by domestic violence and recognizes the advocates, victim service providers, and organizations who tirelessly prevent domestic violence and extend hope, extend the healing to survivors and victims of domestic violence. Whereas victims should have help to find the compassion, to find the comfort and healing they need. And domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. Now therefore, I, Rah Medina, mayor of the city of Palm Bay, by virtue of the authority of said office, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And I urge all that we dedicate ourselves to upholding the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. And witness hereof, I set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Palm Bay to be affixed this sixteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. Who's receiving this? You, Ms. Sandy? Congratulations, ma'am. Thank you for listening.
My name is Sandy Dobson. Just a little bit about myself. I've been an advocate here for six years. Before that, I was with our dispatch, our communication center for thirty-three years, making a total of thirty-nine years that I've been serving domestic violence victims. I want to thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, the city council, the city staff. I want to thank police leadership and for recognizing us and for Serene Harbor. We help people through the darkest hours of their lives so that they can come out the other end happy and successful and leading wonderful lives. And I want to thank all the people here, all the people in the leadership for helping us do that. Thank you.
So this one's a little early. This is National Native American Heritage Month, November twenty twenty-five. Claire Ellis, come on up with your husband. With John? You're going to play for us, John? Rhythm, are you? Awesome. Whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the storied legacy of American Indians and Alaska natives in our nation that cherish legacy, rich cultures, and heroic history of military service. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six and recognition was expanded by President George H.W. Bush in August of nineteen ninety, design, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas Florida consults with six federally recognized tribes affiliated with Florida, the Muskegee Tribe of Indians of Florida, the Mississippi Band of Choctaw Indians, the Mistogee Creek or Creek Indians, and the Porch Band of Creek Indians, the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma, and the Seminole Tribe of Florida. And whereas during World War II, skilled Native Americans, known as cold talkers, United States Marines, I want to add, used the Navajo language to transmit top secret information to allied forces, and Native Americans continued to serve in the armed forces with distinguished commitment and valor in defense of our nation. And whereas approximately sixty percent of what we today was originally domesticated by Native Americans. Now therefore, I, Rah Medina, do hereby proclaim the month of November as National Native Heritage Month in the city of Palm Bay as a time to celebrate the cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Native Americans and recognize their contributions to our nation. And witness thereof, I set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this sixteenth day of October. And you know what? Master Chief Batten would be really excited about this proclamation. Unfortunately, he's not here today. But Master Chief, this is also for you, big man.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, for this wonderful proclamation. And I'll just like to add that by ethnicity, Native Americans are the largest enlistment in our U.S. military today. And what I'd like to share with you is a beautiful event. This is the seventeenth year of the Native Rhythms Festival. It's free. It's three days. It's in Wickham Park. It's in November from the fourteenth to the sixteenth. There's no admission. It's family friendly. And what that means, because it's a Native American event, there can, there can be no alcohol at Native American events. So it's a very happy place. It's a very wonderful place for children. There's a native village. We have incredible performers from all over the country, workshops, everything's free. We have our vendors. We're going to have some native fried bread. So please join us and come to a beautiful, family-friendly event. And I'll leave a few of these here in the shelf. Feel free to pick them up. And we thank you, Mayor Medina, so much for letting us have this opportunity.
I'd like to say one thing before I play. The Cherokee people in eighteen thirty-eight, eighteen thirty-nine were driven from their homes into Indian Territory, which is currently eastern Oklahoma. By that time, a great many had converted to Christianity. And I'm going to play a song that is said to have been sung many times along the Trail of Tears. My husband, John Ellis, and vice chairman of the event.
So today, we're going to recognize a few of our volunteers. And I'd like to call up Jessica Lovell. Jessica, are you here? How about Dr. Deborah or Deborah Livingston? Dr. Livingston. I guess, I guess neither one is here. I also have a five-year pin for Joe Hale and Asuko. I guess we're not presenting any volunteer pins at this time. Okay, we are now on presentations. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We've got.
Right on the mic, sir.
It's on. We'll get just a little closer. First up, we've got a presentation from our finance team tonight. We've been trying to get this in front of you. And it's on our government efficiency funding request tracker, part of our DOGE and accountability efforts. And really proud of the team who developed it, of their own volition, saw a need, filled a need, did an incredible piece of work that probably would have cost the city several hundred thousand dollars. And I think you're going to enjoy seeing it. It's going to be a great tool as we move forward into this next fiscal year.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Henchman, the Budget Program Administrator for the city of Palm Bay. As the city transitions to a new ERP system, the budget team has been committed to providing innovative tools for the departments to enhance how they monitor their expenditures and their overall budget. Tonight, we're excited to introduce the Budget Runner, which is our funding tracker program. This centralized platform will give them the ability to get daily updates from our current financial system and integrate it with all of their funding requests. So it'll provide enhanced, real-time transparency and accountability on how taxpayer funds are being utilized. Reports generated from this tool are going to be brought back to council on a quarterly basis, meaning they're going to be accessible to all of the residents. One of the great things about this tool is we are also developing modules for program management tracking, which is an item that you guys talked about working on with departments. You'll be able to see updates on what phase a project is in, what the current budget is, if it's below or under budget, and it will have intercompatibility with other departments. So if it's multiple departments working on one project, you'll have one centralized location for all of that information. Along with that, we're also going to integrate grant tracking. So everything will be housed in one program. So you'll have your budget, your grants, and your projects in one place for departments to work on. Our hope is to be able to integrate this program in with our new workday system. But for now, this is our current fix, and everything was built in-house by our budget analyst, Shane Bird. So I'm going to turn everything over to him.
Hey, everybody. Shane Bird.
Do you have a mic, Mr. Shane?
Awesome. Cool. Now I can hear you guys, or you can hear me. Okay, so my name is Shane Bird. I'm with the finance department in the, specifically in budget. And I came to the city of Palm Bay about six months ago. And something that I want to highlight before I show this to y'all is that I really want to thank my team, especially Jessica and Larry in the back for supporting me and essentially providing me the opportunity and the tools to be able to be creative and be innovative. You know, with us being here on the Space Coast, that's, I think, one of the highly attractive qualities about this area is how innovative this general area is with aerospace defense and all of that. So in selecting the city of Palm Bay, I wanted to come to a place that would allow me to be innovative. So in doing that, I've developed a program in-house over the last thirty days, and it is still very much work in progress as I identify bugs and I work on issues that I identify. But so far, it's coming together to being a, essentially a holistic, centralized information database for tracking funding requests, projects, grants, and the things that Jessica had mentioned. So to kind of kick it off, where we're at right now is essentially the dashboard screen that when you first log in, you'll be shown your dashboard specific to your department. So our departments throughout the city will log in and essentially keep up with things like their budget requests. So let's say the IT department is needing to purchase switch replacements for their core network. They might put in a funding request for that. And with that, we want to be able to track the purchase orders affiliated with that request. So we've integrated purchase order tracking, purchase requisition tracking, and invoice tracking into that that will link to these authorization requests. So kind of going into that general idea, oh, actually, I'm logged out. Let's do this. So logging in. Now every department will have their own login, which is nice. Everything's secure behind multi-factor authentication is what we're going to set up. So that way, everything in here is going to be locked and keyed behind secure, best enterprise standard practices. So getting into our bars, what we have here is essentially the table that tracks all of our authorization requests. So anytime a department has an authorization request for their budget, whether it's something like the purchase of police cars to the purchase of core network infrastructure, all of those requests will be tracked here. And, and essentially, we will be able to provide statistics, data, and information related to those requests, whether, you know, whether, you know, that request has been stale for too long. You know, we authorized maybe a purchase of a million dollars, and we're now eight months into the fiscal year, and we haven't seen that request be spent yet. So all of that type of information will be gathered and essentially tracked in this module, where we're able to then engage with the departments on an individual basis about their requests and essentially get the latest and greatest information. So that way, we know what are these budget dollars doing and where are they going and how are they being spent. So we can actually drill down into our actual requests. And again, a lot of this stuff is still work in progress. So I do ask y'all to bear with me. But getting into that, you'll see, we've got two examples here that I have, which essentially just lists those requests in a nice tabular format. Now, once I fix a few bugs, you'll actually be able to go in and see the actual individual linkage between requests and their purchase orders, as well as their invoices. And in fact, if we go to purchase requisitions, might actually, I think my code space shut down. So some of this stuff isn't loading. But the general gist is, you have your purchase requisitions, which turn to purchase orders, which then turn to invoices. And what we want to do is see that flow all the way through from beginning to end. What does that look like? How does that, how does that, that time to completion look from the time in which you are authorized to spend these funds to when you actually complete the expense and close out that request? Another interesting thing, too, is that these budget authorization requests are also going to be linked to their projects and grants. So if a project has an authorization request affiliated with it, that linkage will be there. And we can kind of see the relationship and the, essentially, the connections between things like grants that we receive, to project requests that have been funded, to even just general operating requests, whether it's air bottle testing for the fire department, to, you know, new personnel request. All of that, we want to be able to track in a centralized place. And that's essentially what this will do. We also have a governance dashboard. And in fact, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna try and restart my space here. That way, you guys can see it. But what we're gonna do on a quarterly basis is present to mayor and council the status of these authorization requests and projects and grants, and essentially be able to provide a live update as to where we're at in the fiscal year, not just with these authorization requests, but grants, projects, and everything in between. It's a general idea, is provide a central transparent mode of communication for not just departments working with one another, but to communicate that to you all and the elected officials. And if I can go ahead, see if this'll work. Gotta love, you gotta love budget software, beta software. It's great.
So we're gonna, we're gonna run out of time, Shane?
Yeah.
Just as the module works when we're on our secure network and server in-house, we tried to download a portion to demo it. And obviously, you know, it's not connected to the right pieces. But, you know, essentially, again, really proud of finance staff as we're working, implementing the budget requirements, the internal tracking, the auditing requirements that this council's asked us to put in place. You know, rather than have to go out and do a bunch of work, we're using the existing systems, designing the modules. They'll be compatible with Workday. And for the first time, we're gonna have real-time data dashboards, real-time tracking on our finances. And so just really proud of the finance team for stepping up to the plate and delivering a tool that's gonna be incredibly useful for you guys to know what's going on, the community, and for us to be able to manage projects, budgets, and the accountability of every single penny that comes through on these projects moving into the future. So just very grateful. Thank you, Larry. Thank you to the team, Jessica, Shane, and everybody who put that together.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate that. So Mr. Morton, you know, we're now on item number two.
Yes. We have Gabriel Broden, our Utilities Director. As we look to embark on a lot of new capital projects, not just roads and other infrastructure, we've got a lot of utility infrastructure we're working on. And a lot of our utility infrastructure is for our existing community. It's to build redundancies. It's to ensure we have capacity for our existing service areas, our existing residents. We're strengthening...
Hold on a second. I want to call this remaining water. Carry on.
We're strengthening our systems, and we're planning to, you know, do better jobs at proactive maintenance and more aggressive maintenance, bringing things in a new standard, meeting American Water Association guidelines. And so wanted Gabriel here to come remind everybody, as we enter a season this next fiscal year, of probably bringing big project requests to you and keeping some big projects moving. So Gabriel's just gonna remind us sort of where the Utility Department has been, where we're going. He's got a lot of slides. He's not gonna cover everyone tonight. It would take longer than 10 minutes, but hit the highlights for you and the community. Thanks, Gabriel.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. Last year, I gave an update, three months after coming to the city, gave an update. Here's kind of that agenda that I used, went over the department overview, infrastructure overview, some key performance indicators. Tonight, what I'd like to do is actually kind of flip-flop that and actually move those first three to an appendix, kind of refresh. Some of you haven't seen that. You can look at those at your leisure. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer that. So what I'd like to do is focus on key updates, and then also some critical department priorities, and kind of how, what we're looking like in those priorities that we had raised last year. Water plant expansions, wastewater plant expansions, we've got a lot of projects, but these are our two areas that are probably the greatest. So let's first talk about customer growth for water accounts. We shared with you last year, in 2029, our customer count will be likely near 52,000. Over the last year, that's not really changed. We still anticipate that to be where we land. So really was thinking about, how do we get the water online? We've had some times where we got kind of close to our supply versus what the demand was. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't have those problems in the future. A couple of water plant expansions that are in progress are coming down the pike. The first is 2.3 million gallon addition that has been released. We expect this to come online at the end of 2026 or the beginning of 2027, adding 2.3 million gallons per day. This is a rare project that came in under the engineer's estimate. So we're very excited about that. And then after that, and we'll have an additional 2 million gallons that will round out what the south plant is capable of reaching to without adding additional building space. And I really want to just kind of focus on the fact that these two expansions are completely and totally funded by growth, by our impact fees, more than covers these two expansions. The next expansion I want to talk about is at the north. The north, we're gonna be adding a RO plant. We had in the past, and some of you might remember that, we had an RO plant years ago that was decommissioned, one and a half million gallons a day, plus the lime plant that's up there. We're going to be adding a brand-new RO plant, targeting in 2030, 3.3 million gallons coming online. If you recall, last council meeting, Wharton Smith was here and presented. There'll be the C Mar on that project, could bring that online on time. Really excited about that process. Want to talk about the main driver for especially that expansion. That expansion, the main driver is regulatory compliance. I've talked to you before about PFOS and our wells and the chlorides that we have. PFOS are, a lot of issues are raised by that and requirements. I've presented in our appendix, some of the details about those PFOS limits. The RO plant will help us address those issues. It's also gonna provide reliable supply to our current customers and system resiliency. So our current demand, we talked about that. This is AWA benchmark, different percentiles. In 2023, Palm Bay was at the 84 percentile. That means we were using most of our supply. Where you'd really like to be is closer to that median area or between median and 25th percentile. After our expansion went on in 2024, we got down to 71. After these other expansions that we're talking about, we'll be closer to 47%. So in that median area. Now, here we talk about the PFOS. So the lime plant that we currently have will need to be decommissioned at some point. And once that is decommissioned, we'll then be at 63%. So that's a really good spot to be in. That's accounting for anticipated growth between now and 2033. Updates to projects on the wastewater plant. And, you know, our growth, again, we still expect that to be going along as we expected last year. 26,577 customers there about in 2029. The south regional water reclamation facility, the albatross that we've been dealing with for the last several years is on progress. Here's a drone footage of the site recently. We've had a number of delays. It's been a very frustrating for all of us, for developers, for council members, city staff. And there are reasons for those delays. Some may call them excuses, but I think we should acknowledge what those are. One is early delays tied to COVID-related supply chain impacts. Big driver is contractor, contractor performance issues, and also design issues requiring revisions. Those two bottom have really caused an awful lot of delay for us. What have we done to try to address that? Mitigation actions that we've taken is to increase contractor check-ins, added monthly walkthroughs. Instead of meeting once a quarter with them, we started meeting monthly. I started having weekly calls with them, really ramping up how often we're talking with them, trying to help spur the project on. We made select owner-direct purchases to keep the schedule moving despite contractor cash flow issues. We've worked with engineering and contractors on plans and adjusting to get critical items moved up first and spending their time on those issues. And I'll tell you, we're getting to a tipping point on the project. System checks and startups, we're targeting for those to start. Dry checks, October 27th, so in a couple of weeks. Those will go on for a couple of weeks. We'll have some time for RJ Sullivan to do any punch list items before we start wet checks in December. And then finally, startup phasing between January 5th and February 4th, and then be online. So we're doing everything we can to hold to this. And we've been working with RJ Sullivan, the engineer, a lot of the subcontractors, and Kubota, who it's their brains that's gonna be running everything. So we're on target. We've got some expansions planned there. I'll let you look at those. I'm gonna keep moving for time. So critical priorities for the department, project delivery, employee recruitment, retention, and regulatory compliance. Project delivery, ensuring we have qualified partners in the process with us. We've increased our engineering services partners. We've added contracts for plant repairs and emergency services to ensure that we're delivering on projects. Contractor involvement as early as possible. Again, that C Mar process helps us with a lot of those things, so that we are delivering on projects as we plan. Sounding, we've been making a lot of contractors and engineers aware of projects that we have going on. There's a lot of competition for qualified contractors. If they don't know about your projects early enough, they won't bid on them. And so we've been trying to do a lot of that to make people aware of what we've got going on in Palm Bay. Strong start, steady management will lead to a successful outcome. Employee recruitment and retention. Our people make the difference. We talked about the gray wave, the turnover rate and turn-down rate. What have we been doing to address that? We talked about, it starts with leadership. We've talked about trust and clarity an awful lot with our group. We want to build honest relationships and give people purpose, direction, and alignment. We're aligning around some key things that we want out of people. We want smart, hungry, and humble employees. Smart, not just intellectually, but how they interact with other people. Hungry, that they're willing to go above and beyond with their job duty calls, and they're gonna try and reach out and do other things. Humble, if they do those things, and they get, someone says, hey, you didn't do that, right? They're coachable. They're willing to take some instruction and really grow. That's what we've really been talking about, doing that. And also, kind of around driving safety, customer service, continuous improvement, and value to our customers. Accountability and growth. So we set those standards. We're holding people accountable. But not only we're holding them accountable, we're also helping them to grow. If they don't meet that mark, how can they get to be able to meet that mark? And finally, a supportive culture. It's not just, here's what we're laying out. We want people's involvement. We want them to give back and kind of direct what's going on. Evaluating the organization structure, I want to talk about the gray wave. We've been focusing on people. Nine of our employees have earned their first license recently. Seven employees have obtained their CDLs, and they're still with us. And our Heritage High program, we've got five operators that are working for us from the Heritage High program. Two are lead operators, and we have one new, new hire that is working for us. Turnover rate, in 2022, 27% of the people that we hired quit in the first year, within that first year. It's a terrible turnover rate. This year, so far through September, we're at 4% people leaving. So we're creating that culture that people want to leave. Part of the problem we also need to do is hire well, so that we're not firing people as well as them just leaving. So there's a lot more there. I'll be happy to let you just look at those. Or if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you for the presentation, Gabriel. Thank you. So we are now, if I'm tracking correctly, we're on public hearings, number one, Madam Smith.
Ordinance 2025-45. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevara County, Florida, vacate and abandoning a portion of the rear 20-foot public utility and drainage easement, located within Lot 8, Block 470, Port Malabar Unit 11, according to the plat thereof. As recorded in Plat Book 15, Page 39, the public records of Brevara County, Florida, illegally described herein, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and defer to Mr. Morton.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, nothing new to add. This is a final reading.
Okay. Is David and Donna Mattson here? Are they here? Did you want to come up and say a few words, or?
If you would like to add a pool...
Yes, yes, sir.
...to the property, Valiant, Valiant Street.
Copy that, sir. Any questions of the applicant, counsel? Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-45.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Hammer. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson, was that an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. That, that was the final.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. We're now on item number two, Madam Smith, public hearings.
Ordinance 2025-46. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevara County, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of the site, 6-foot public utility and drainage easement, located within Lot 14, Block 2642, Port Malabar Unit 50, according to the plat thereof. As recorded in Plat Book 23, Page 8, the public records of Brevara County, Florida, illegally described herein, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Mr. Morton?
Again, Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you. This is a final reading. We have nothing new to add. Staff is here for any questions, if you have them.
Any questions of staff, counsel? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Yes, come on up. Mr. Negron.
Hi, good evening. We are trying to evacuate an easement of our property to keep a carport that was built by the previous owners. So this is just step one, to keep it in order and bring it into compliance.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-46.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Hammer. Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
I was just saying, second, mayor.
Okay, I'll, I'll scratch Councilman Johnson. I'll scratch Councilman Hammer, and I'll say Johnson seconded. It's hard, it's hard to tell, because you're not here, brother. So sorry about that. So I got, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0 unanimously. That, that's final. Okay, congratulations. So now we're on new business, item number three. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. On Monday, September 22nd, 2025, city staff held an executive session with the city council to discuss the terms of the proposed contract agreement with Nige Blue Bargaining Unit. This... Uh this reflects those conversations, including the changes proposed and ratified by the members of Nage Blue on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, where they voted for adoption. It includes the addition of Christmas Eve as a officially paid holiday, which is in congruence with the rest of the city. Increase increases by including wage adjustments, some enhancements to longevity pay, and some additional specialty pay for our wastewater treatment plant operators. Um I would just say, I'd love counsel in the community to recognize that, yes, this is an expense, but more importantly, it's an investment. Uh we have an outstanding, absolutely outstanding crew, the men and women of Public Works, the men and women of Nage White and Blue who do the heavy lifting and the hard work that makes the city run day to day, uh just do an incredible job for us. The cost of retraining and recruiting is somewhere between 50% to 200% of a person's yearly wage. So um from a city manager management perspective, uh again, thank you for considering this investment in our incredible teams.
Thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor, any speaker cards? On new, new business item three?
I got one from Michael Williams.
Mr. Williams?
Michael Williams, 813 Wheatley, Palm Bay, Florida, 32909. I am also the Nage Blue president at this time, and I just wanted to thank the council for, you know, going over and trying to do a final approval on the contract. I want to appreciate the uh city manager for doing what he could for helping us get the contract and the HR department for getting the contract. And I just wanted to say to the citizens, Nage Blue is everybody you don't see. It just, you know, I'm directing to you, but kind of speaking to behind me. It's everybody you don't see. It's the people who are cleaning the canals, people who are sweeping the roads, people who are fixing the the red lights and the stop signs, guys that are fixing the water breaks and fixing the uh roads, potholes when they can. It's everybody you do not see out there doing what they can for the city. It's parks. The parks are clean, the trash is picked up. That's Nage Blue, that's picking those up and cleaning those up. And since I don't see anybody for here for white, I kind of like to speak a little bit for them. Those are all the people that you hear but don't see. That's your 911 operators, that's your executive people who are doing all the uh phone calls, all the, what I want to say, grunt work for the management. So we appreciate y'all looking at our contracts and uh y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have a question, Councilman Hammer? Okay, I'll I'll get to you. Uh Deputy Mayor, are the speaker cards on this item?
No other cards there for MB3.
Okay, thank you. Um I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Hammer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Councilman Hammer.
I just want to. I just want to thank our blue collar. Uh my first 15 years here at the city, I was a member of our blue collar uh uh union. I know how hard it is to sit in there and go through negotiations and I commend our staff. I commend our blue collar. I commend Mike for stepping in um last minute and doing the actions that he has. And um our blue collar and our white collar are the blood of our community. They keep things running. Anytime you ever see anything happen, it's not a bunch of people from the office out there working. It's it's the men and women back here in bright colors. Um and these are times late at night, early in the morning. Unfortunately, emergencies don't happen at the most convenient times. I just want to thank everybody for what they do, for the time they've put in here. Some have been here for a long time, some have been here, you know, just starting. Um you guys are a family in blue collar and white collar, and I just want to thank everybody for what you do. Thank you.
And Councilman Hammer, you're you're uh you're deeply entrenched in the in in this city because your parents also are part of the foundation of this city, is that correct?
Yeah, my 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 grandmother worked for the city, my father worked for the city almost 40 years. And um um it's funny, you said entrenched, my first job was cleaning trenches.
I think that was purposeful.
Yeah. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Right now, I got a motion by Councilman Hammer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Passes unanimously. We're now on new business, item number four, Mr. Morton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I can't say it better than uh Mike Hammer or our Nage Blue president said it. So just to say also, we considered this contract on Monday, September 22nd, 2025, in an executive session. This is a reflection of the negotiations that we had with Nage White and Nage Blue. Uh Nage White members ratified their portion of this agreement on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, voting for adoption. Very similarly, this addresses a Christmas Eve holiday as previously approved by city council and brings that into congruence. Also deals with wage adjustments, some longevity pay enhancements, and um changes very slightly the cost of uniforms that allows our uh white collar workers uh to show up uh ready, ready for work in in city-approved uh work, work wear and PPE. So again, very grateful to Nage White and Nage Blue for a very earnest and professional negotiation and grateful for the work they do every day.
Thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor, any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
New business, well, I need a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm calling a question. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero, thank you. We're now on public comments. Deputy Mayor.
Robin Hughes.
I'm sorry? What did you say?
Robin Hughes.
Mr. Hughes?
Miss.
Or Miss Hughes? You could bring that up. There's a button that says height on that, no, right where you're at, right in front of you. It says height? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right in the mic.
Are we ready? Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, chief, and members of the community. My name is Robin Hughes, 15733 Pine City, Skinn Loop, Mascot, Florida. I am a councilwoman, a 13-year law enforcement officer, a certified general instructor for both corrections and law enforcement. I understand the badge, not as a symbol of power, but as public trust. And when that trust is broken, communities suffer. Good officers pay the price and public confidence erodes. The facts we can't ignore. We have an officer, Sean Rollins, whose pattern of documented complaints, termination, controversy stretches across a multiple jurisdictions from South Carolina to Mascot, Florida, and now Palm Bay. These are not rumors. These are, these are records. When a department hires individuals with past performance and conduct issues, it's not just an administrative error, it's a threat to public trust and to officer safety. Every time oversight fails, the consequences multiply. Accountability is not anti-police, it is the backbone of professionalism. It is, it, it is how we separate authority from abuse, power from purpose. It ensures that those who wear the uniform honor it and those who dishonor it are not recycled from agency to agency without being held accountable for their actions. When misconduct is overlooked, every good officer has to rebuild what one careless hire destroys. And that is unfair to the profession, to the city, and to the citizens we serve. Leadership requires courage. Counsel, you may not oversee the daily operations of the department, but you do oversee the standard that this city stands for. You decide whether transparency is practiced or avoided. You decide whether accountability is real or performative. You can no longer afford to dismiss patterns or as coincidence. We can no longer excuse negligence as oversight. Palm Bay has a chance to lead, to show that this city would not overlook and would not overlook or look the other way, that it values integrity over image and that accountability is non-negotiable. I say this as someone who continues to live with the lasting impact of one traffic stop by Officer Sean Rollins that changed my life forever. Yet, even though that, even through that experience, I stand here today still serving. I still believe, I still wear the badge. I believe in the core values of of the of this profession. Accountability protects the badge, silence endangers it. Palm Bay, act now before another story, another family, another city meeting becomes the conversation about what could have been prevented. Because when we stop seeing the people behind the pain, we lose the very heart of the of the public service. I leave you with this, Proverbs 21:15. When justice is done, it brings joy to the righteous, but terror to evaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Daniel Hughes.
Daniel Hughes?
Daniel Hughes.
Daniel Hughes? Is that you, sir?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Hughes. Former correction officer, um school educator, mentor. I'm now suffered with PTSD. Um before January 22nd, again, I was a correction officer and I encounter Sean Rollins. The same Sean Rollins you guys today have in your police department. The same Sean Rollins that was seen on a body cam, striking and choking a black pregnant woman. We talk about accountability, you guys talk about being city and all for the public, but yet we condole these actions of police that are put in charge to uphold the law. If you guys truly care about your community, then you guys will stand in a gap for your community and hold these officers accountable for their actions. Even too, as suffering with PTSD, I still continue to serve my community, not only as an educator but as a mentor, to again, teach our kids responsibility, taking accountability from a young age so they can go up to be successful members in society. Not only police officer, but councilman, woman, mayors, and the leaders that we need. But if you guys stand up here and not step in a gap and speak up, then what are we teaching our kids? We are teaching them it's okay to let this stuff happen and not hold the people accountable. So again, I ask you guys to picture your loved one in these videos that we constantly see that 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 damage and that leave victims in their way and hold these people accountable. If you guys can't do that as public servant, then you guys don't need to be public servants because you guys are doing your community a disservice. Again, I stand here as a proud black man and an educator of all colors. And I hope you guys can, again, look in the mirror, examine yourself, and hold these officers, community leaders accountable for their actions. Because again, it tarnished the community, it tarnished the badge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Michael Brietti.
Michael Brietti, 742 Cornelia Avenue, Palm Bay Southeast. I'm here tonight to ask the powers of authority to once and for all to hold Police Officer Sean Rollins and Fire Chief Richard Stover accountable for their actions of the past and present and for their deception to the city of Palm Bay to gain employment. But also, you must hold accountable the hiring authorities, Human Resources Director Laura Clausen and former city manager Suzanne Sherman for failure to conduct a background check of both Rollins and Stover. Thus reiterating the fact that I retrieved all the information these on these individuals on Google and a simple records check. The facts pertaining to Rollins, one, he was fired via forced resignation, AKA plea agreement, by South Carolina for multiple complaints for excessive force. He lied on the application for employment with Palm Bay stating that he was never fired from another agency, whereas both Clausen and Sherman were notified by Columbia, South Carolina, regarding the specifics of Rollins to include shooting a man in the back of the head, killing him, claiming he was dragged by a vehicle, yet Dash Cam disputed his claims. You can read out any emails that were sent to you people. I believe some of you councilmen did receive that email. Three, Rollins left Palm Bay and was hired by Mascot, Florida, whereas again racially targeted Mrs. Robin Hughes on a traffic stop, where he assaulted by tasing Mr. Hughes and hospitalizing him. He was fired, or should I say, another plea bargain out of Mascot, with lawsuits filed on him back to Palm Bay, where he again lied on his application. In Palm Bay, again, he assaulted Tamera Hatcher and her children. Though this city deemed his actions justified, I doubt very much that the courts will agree and will end up paying millions of taxpayer dollars over this. Richard Stover's release is self-sufficient within the documentation I provided to you, Mr. Morton, outlining his plea agreement with his former county position, thus even provided the investigator's number, Anthony Shembry. Another party also supplied piles of documents showing Stover's intent to securing monies from this city deemed unnecessary, thus trying to take advantage of both the city and us taxpayers, as he did in his last employment. I, I urge you to do something about this. Corruption's just gotten out of control. Bad seeds. They're not all bad, but we have a few bad seeds, they just need to go. You just heard testimony. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Lance Fisher. Lance Fisher, today I received these troubling documents from the city of Palm Bay reference to Officer Rollins's hiring. This paperwork was provided the Palm Bay Police Department during his hiring process for the instance outlined in Columbia, South Carolina. January 11th, 2020, violations of pursuit policy sustained. February 10th, use of force findings not policy compliant. February 22nd, use of force findings not policy compliant. March 6th, use of force findings not policy compliant. March 8th, use of force not policy compliant. April 4th, May 15th, June 4th, all of 2020, use of force not policy compliant. Per their website, when the Columbia, South Carolina PD indicates that a member is non-policy compliant, it means that that officer has not followed the established policies and procedures of the department. On February 3rd, 2021, an internal complaint was conducted. Unsatisfactory performance sustained, courtesy sustained, abusive process sustained, prompt compliance with a direct lawful order of a superior sustained. Excessive or excessive force sustained. Willful violations of policy and procedures endangering persons and property sustained. These documents indicate that on February 17th, Officer Rollins resigned. Here is Officer Rollins' training history reports from Columbia, South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. In bold, separation due to misconduct, termination involving misconduct, the repeated use of excessive force in dealing with public or prisoners, physical or physiological abuse of members of the public and prisoners. The report then describes four uses of alleged misconduct, including pushing down a handcuffed female, grabbing an individual by the throat, which we've all seen, and two uses of force that were deemed unnecessary. The city of Mascot is currently involved in a lawsuit for alleged police brutality at the hands of Sean Rollins. I traveled to Mascot last week and I spoke to their city council, and after speaking to Mascot's employees, they too were aware of his history. Recently, Chief Agello directed a press release regarding the hiring of Officer Sean Rollins. He says the Palm Bay Police Department conducts thorough background checks on every member of your organization. Chief Agello, Chief Spears, Laura Clausen, and I myself failed this community when I hired Officer Rollins. It appears our background investigators were aware of his troubled history, were aware that he had a pattern of controversial use of forces, knew that he either resigned or was terminated after a series of complaints and investigation, but still we chose to hire him. Your city manager indicated that nothing I have provided him, the culture of Palm Bay Police tomorrow, that failed, the failures, leadership of Chief Agello and the need for an outside chief have been credible, not the employers. Not the employers I provided him, the thumb drive with 156 files, including emails, text messages, screenshots, police reports to include the text message between Chief Spears, Chief Agello, and Command Staff about shooting children, calling officers yahoos, and weaponizing the very department to harass and intimidate the chief's neighbors. I provide your city manager names and phone numbers of past employees that would verify much of what I said, but I'm told not a single person was contacted. It's time for change. It's time for a new city manager. It's time for a new chief. Chief Agello, you need to retire today. It's time to protect this community. It's time to protect the officers, the men and women of the Palm Bay Police Department by conducting a nationwide search for a new police chief.
Debra Brockaloni?
Before I start, if I'm speaking now, can I still speak for new item one?
Ma'am, we're on public comments.
No, no, I know. I filled out two.
Do you have a card for new item one?
I did. Okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
So we'll speak on that.
Okay.
But you can speak on whatever you want at this point.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure because you had mentioned you can only speak once. So I just wanted to clarify.
Well, public comments.
Okay. No, I filled out two cards.
Per agenda item.
Okay. Debbie Brockaloni, 1821 Agora Circle, Palm Bay, Florida. I want to apologize to people who received death threats, who received work threats, who have had intimidation because of everything that has gone on. I have come here, this is the third time, I have asked you guys to come up with some kind of unity plan. Nothing. It is progressively getting worse. What are we supposed to do? How are we supposed to respond? I had a gentleman, because I was waiting for the bus today, 35 minutes, stop his vehicle and point the gun at me because I come up here and speak out. But see, what he doesn't realize is I'm Gen X. I don't care. I am here. I don't, this is not the Palm Bay that my kids grew up in. I don't even want my family to come down here. I've been warned to stay away. Why? Am I not a citizen of Palm Bay? Some of you actually, I'm sorry, I'm speaking from the heart and I'm just so passionate about this. Some of you actually went out and knocked door to door, knowing what type of character he has. And yet, when, I can't say it because we have kids, when the poop hit the fan, what did you guys do? What happens if the governor, or even tonight, after you take a vote? How do we recover? How do we get back to arguing with you about getting the roads fixed, turning around with the traffic so my bus isn't 35 minutes late? How do we get back to that? And I apologize again because some of you don't deserve this. Some of us don't deserve this. What do you do if he doesn't get suspended? What do you do whether he's censured or not? How do you get us back to be in the Palm Bay that I remember? Thank you.
Susan Connolly.
Hey, Chief, I'm not sure about the details of that allegation, but maybe we could have someone hear her out about her being a victim and a, thank you, thank you, carry on.
Thank you, Mayor. Woo, it's hard to follow some of these, but hello, I'm Susan Connolly. I'm very glad to be here tonight, even though I'm wearing my Palm Bay Sustainability Board shirt. I'm not here to talk about the board. I am here to acknowledge the City Council because, there's many reasons, but tonight, for your role in the Low Impact Development Conference that MRC, Marine Resources Council, has sponsored for five years. The City of Palm Bay, for five years, has been a part of this program. For five years, there has been high staff attendance from the City of Palm Bay. This year, when I asked last, there are nine employees attending this conference, many of them from the Public Works Department, and there are two members of the Sustainability Board that will be attending. This year, Palm Bay's very own has a key presenter, day one in the morning, no less. Kimberly Hagler, who is the Land Development Manager, will be speaking on Palm Bay Green Infrastructure Planning Begins With A Map. I encourage everybody who's listening tonight to attend. It's open to citizens, organizations, community officials, and come be a part of the growth of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Robert Steis.
Good evening, Council. Robert Steis, 1796 Wimber Drive, Southeast. I want to talk about a proposed item that is going to be what you guys are going to be chatting about today, but I still want to focus on that, and that is the proposed storage unit that the zoning department, when I was at it last time, unanimously denied that. I had somebody on the zoning department, I can't recall his name because I have to admit I hadn't been there in a little while, but when he talked, one of the reasons why he talked about it, he had mentioned car wash, storage unit, gas station. Haven't we had enough of that in Palm Bay? And that just hit me between the eyes. It was just resonated with me. So this storage unit is going to be 45 feet tall, three stories, right next to 711 on Cogan and the American Legion. That's where this place is going. We already have, I was handed some information this evening, the two storage units, one on Bayside Lakes to the right if you're going south, and the other one on the other side, Mr. Mayor, by the former majors. There's the storage units, one of them has 55 open availability units, and the other one has 15. There is not a rush here for storage units. People moved into Bayside Lakes in Palm Bay's for a increased, for lack of a better word, quality of life. You know, you had a golf course there, but it's nice. It's calm. It's peaceful. You have nice oak trees. And we continue to go, storage unit, gas station, okay, and car wash. I'll put that in there. I had broke bread with one of the staff members who I respect greatly, and I said, why does Palm Bay have that stigma? I used to have the same one when I was in Aurora, Colorado. You know, you live in Aurora. And the first thing jumped out of his mouth that was, there's nothing here. I looked like this, where are you going to go? What is your vision? I mean, I seen a comprehensive plan, I engaged in that. You have buildings going on like crazy. When I do Meals on Wheels, I mean, I see all of these buildings and it's for sale. Everything is stagnant. What do you have, what is your vision for making a Palm Bay and not have it being called, referred to as a bedroom community? Excuse my French, but this sucks. You know? I mean, we have suburban gridlock that I haven't seen since being back east. So please think about what we want to be when we grow up. It's your legacy. Thank you for your time.
Pat Dalper.
Good evening, Council and staff. Pat Dalper, 410 Georges Avenue. We had a lot of rain the last few weeks, and I'm very concerned about the flooding. And I've been coming up here talking for the last four years on the flood plane. On my street, I have three lots. One is mine that is not developed. We left it as natural as possible. It has two to three feet of water and three quarters of the lot is filled with water. I have another neighbor where that lot is also undeveloped. It's almost full of water. I have a neighbor that has a pool in the back where the water is almost flowing into the pool. This is because the person that built behind my lot has, it's about probably four to five feet higher than my lot. He has created problem not only with my lot, but with several other homes. Now that is going on not just in my neighborhood, but in many neighborhoods. Now, if a developer is building a lot of houses all at once, they should all be at the same level. Okay? I'm not talking about that. But also, if those developers are building next to a neighborhood that's been there for a while, they are going to create a flooding problem. So I want to know, what are we going to do? The Health Department keeps saying, well, it has to go higher because of the water table. Give me a break. I've had two or three houses in my neighborhood that have built their homes at the same level of the houses that have been there. So we really need to do something about the flooding. And I've been driving around and on Emerson, San Felipe, Jupiter, Fallon, and a number of other roads that have sidewalks. The sidewalks are flooded, you can't walk on them, they get muddy, and the driveways are like this. So we need to really do something about the water. And if Melbourne Tillman Canal cannot open up their locks during a heavy rainy time, then there's a problem. Big problem. Thank you.
Judith Gamble? Judith Gamble? Ken, there she is. She's coming now.
Yeah. Wait till you get to the mic, Ms. Judith.
Oh, I'm loud. You'll hear me.
Just, we'll speak into the mic.
I took dramatic art as a child and I can project.
Ma'am, we'll project over here.
Hi, my name is Judith Gamble. I live at 1012 Ulster Avenue Southeast in Palm Bay, Florida, 32909. And I'm going to continue the conversation that the lady just had. I bought my house in 2009. It's been a beautiful experience living in my house, really has. I'm very attached to it. I have a half an acre. It is all one lot. I have paperwork to prove that from the county. The problem is what she says happened right next door to me. A house was built right next door to me on your new drainage plants where they're built very high. This is on a .21 lot. There's only five feet on each side of the house. It may be a little more. The lot is so high that all of the drainage water comes onto my property. I have downloaded pictures from the government website for all the years I've been there, there's never been flooding. I have pictures that I've taken while I've lived in the house of my dogs running in my backyard. There has never been flooding. I have one picture of my house suffering from flooding that was after a hurricane, and the only reason I took the picture is my fence fell over, and it was for insurance purposes. You will see maybe one inch of flooding in my front yard, none in my backyard. Now, I've been trying for nine months to get some attention to this. I've called Mr. Jaffe because he is the person that was building the house. I've spoken with the owners of the house. I've spoken with the city. And I kept getting put off, calls were not returned, and for the last two and a half months, half of my property has been underwater. Now, what happens in Florida when water sits for over 90 days? Disease. I'm a retired veterinarian technician. I can tell you all kinds of things that are going to happen to my animals if I let them out in my own yard.
Ma'am, can you speak in the mic for a few?
Sorry.
Thank you.
The problem comes from interpretation of the rules. I have been told by everyone I've talked to, and I have a whole packet of documentation of emails and calls, that my property is vacant.
Okay.
And undeveloped.
All right, ma'am, you see this gentleman over there? Kevin, raise. Would you make your way over there? I'd like for him to look into your specific situation, ma'am. Thank you.
Could he help me?
Yeah, actually, I think he should come to you.
Mayor, do you mind if I just make a statement because you brought my name into it?
Absolutely, carry on.
So it's true, I'm a home builder in Palm Bay. I built the home on this street. I learned, I think, three Fridays ago, for the first time, that there was an issue with the neighboring property. The home's been seized, finalized. The new homeowner's been living there for almost a year now. And actually, received an email from my Cape Coral Sales Model that she's been reaching out to the Cape Coral Sales Model office. I got this email late on a Friday night. Monday morning, the person in our corporation that handles these situations immediately reached out to Ms. Gamble.
Yes.
And she, Ms. Gamble, said, listen, I don't want to speak to you. I only speak to men. And this phone call is being recorded. At that time, we had asked her, you know, you don't have permission to record the phone call. Can we continue to have this conversation? She said, no, the phone call is recorded. I hired an attorney, so we stopped all conversation.
None of that is true, sir.
Okay, well, all right, ma'am, my goal in this is to somehow get you some type of resolve, and Mr. Kevin is going to meet with you.
Try to be upsetting, or loud, or ugly, or mean, but everything that just came out of his mouth is incorrect.
Ma'am, would you mind meeting with him and see how we could help? Thank you. Next speaker?
Ken Delgado.
Good evening. Ken Delgado, 154 Angelo Road, Southeast in the beautiful city of Palm Bay. We just celebrated Christopher Columbus Day, and I believe President Trump put it back on the map, and I thought we'd just talk about Christopher Columbus. This is one of the quotes from him. "I have seen and put in study to look into all the scriptures which our Lord opened to my understanding. I could sense his hand upon me so that it became clear to me that it was feasible to navigate from here to the Indies, and he gave me the will to execute the idea." Of course, he never reached the Indies, but he did reach North America, South America. I think he landed on the islands, and through that, it continued on to have these United States of America, as history tells us. And soon, very soon, we're going to celebrate 250 years of our anniversary as a constitutional republic, which I'm excited to celebrate. On top of that, I found out, or I heard, I heard from a reliable source that the average constitution lasts only 19 years, or somewhere in that area. And here we are celebrating 250 years of being the United States of America. Columbus further believed that the Lord spoke to him out of Jeremiah 1:5, which he likewise recorded in his Book of Prophecies, where he quoted Jeremiah, "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you, and before you were born, I consecrated you. I have appointed you a prophet to the nations." That's one of the many scriptures that he wrote. I'd just like to know that you are formed with a purpose. Each one of us have a purpose. God designed us with the design to be made in his image and in his likeness. And not only that, were we designed, we were designed for purpose and a destiny. And so my prayer today is that we all find our destiny somehow to be able to impact for good and not evil. for good and not evil, to have a future, to have a promise, and to enjoy the life that Jesus Christ gave us through the cross and his resurrection. And so I'm just celebrating today. I thought we could get some celebration going hard here in this, these chambers. Amen. God bless y'all. Looking forward to Christmas extravaganza, too, coming up in December. We're celebrating Jesus Christ.
Santa, right?
Next speaker. Say again?
Santa, Santa, right?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Kenny, I hope you're still there with us.
He's on the phone.
Yeah, I know. That's why I say I hope he's still with us. Mr. Morton, if you don't mind, sir, when I'm speaking, I would like to have your full attention, just like Patricia's. I've been watching as everybody has come up here and everybody's been looking down, doing whatever they have to do. And to me, it's so disrespectful. I have been a candidate, just like all of you guys have, and I don't understand what is going on with this council. You guys were voted in. You have to show us respect. You can't be threatening us with attorneys. We are here because we are concerned about our city, about what's going on. We are in turmoil. Please pay attention to me. And I'm taking my minutes back. You're not paying attention, Mr. Morton. And you know what? I supported you and I don't appreciate it. I am speaking and I do want your attention. We have serious issues, Mr. Mayor, and you know we do. You're a Christian man and I'm a Christian woman, and I believe that God has a plan for everything. But this is not his plan. This is some evil stuff going on here. What's going on with our police department? What's going on with our city council? What's going on with our attorney's office? It has to be addressed. We can't continue to let this community come out here and get so upset and disgusted by what's going on in our city. I have a right to speak. I'm a United States citizen. My brother fought for this country, a Marine who gave his life for this country. Okay? I've been here since I was two years old. I can't be threatened by somebody who says I'm going to get an attorney. I can't be threatened by somebody who says I don't have a right to speak if I don't live in the area. That's not the way this constitution is. And thank you Pastor Delgado for bringing it up. 250 years of a United States constitution that gives us our right to speak, gives us our right to pursue happiness. And most of the people in Palm Bay are not happy right now. Leadership has to lead, and we are not being led in the right direction, Mr. Mayor. And I don't want this to be a reflection on you, on your legacy, but when we have people like Mr. Jaffe and like Chandler, who are disregarding our freedoms, we definitely have to vote them both out and we definitely have to get a council that cares about this community, not threatened by getting an attorney. It is inappropriate. And Mr. Morton and Patricia, Patricia, I can't believe I'm asking for her to look at me and acknowledge me and she ignores me. It's inappropriate. She needs to go. She needs to go because I pay my taxes and those $250,000 salary that she has has to go. We don't need all those attorneys are in that office. It's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Mr. Mayor, I implore you, do the right thing. We need her to go and we need an attorney who's going to represent us in all these lawsuits, including my husband's, because my husband was mistreated, abused by the police department with the sex of force. The FBI has said it, the Department of Law Enforcement has said it, and everyone has said it, the Department of Justice. But you guys have not even acknowledged this letter. So Mr. Morton?
Thank you.
Let's talk because this cannot continue.
Thank you. Do you want to just?
What's that? Just for clarity, I never threaten an attorney. Ms. Gamble did, for clarity.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Courtney Newton.
Thank you. Next speaker is Courtney? Courtney Newton?
He's right here. I'm here to assist.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing? My name's Courtney Newton. My girlfriend is Temma Hatchery, the one that my wife, well, my wife now, we just got married two days ago. I have five kids and they're taking this real hard, what Sean Rollins did. I have a two-year-old that reenacts this stuff every day now. She goes and says, mommy, mommy in jail. They did this to mommy. They did this. And it's like hard for me because I'm a father of five by myself now. And because of this case, she can't get out of jail and it's been very hard for me. You know what I mean? I know you guys said it was protocol, but I don't know what protocol is, you know? The guy was, you know, yeah, she probably shouldn't have, she probably should have got out the car. But she called 911 and asked for a supervisor and he said a supervisor was coming. So what was the need of busting out the window? Who wouldn't be scared, you know? Being black, it's hard already. So when he busted out the window, she was scared. And yes, she probably shouldn't have left the scene, but she was scared for her life. She went home, he busted my door open and, you know, my 17-year-old son, he was yelling and screaming, said, you know, stop hitting my mom, she's pregnant. And they told him to back up on the driveway. He did exactly what the police officer told him. He backed up. The police officer came in my driveway, put my son in handcuffs and swept his sweep from under him and slammed him to the ground. That was, they said I was justified. I don't understand that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Parker Allen, Palm Bay, Florida. At the October 2nd city council meeting, our deputy mayor disclosed a laundry list of malfeasance attributable to the Neo Confederate. His malign violations of law include Palm Bay Code of Ordinances Section 58.03 related to his abuse of our city sealer logo, which is mentioned in an upcoming business item. Perhaps more shocking was the revelation on how he squandered over $25,000 of our taxpayer funds for his Klan rally. Code of Ordinances Section 62.01 defines abuse as behavior involving the use of city funds or property in an excessive or improper manner which a prudent person would not consider a reasonable and necessary business practice, given the facts and circumstances. It defines gross waste of public funds as an unnecessary or unauthorized expenditure of a substantial amount of money. I know Republicans are excited to throw $40 billion at Argentina like it's nothing, but I still consider $25,000 to be a substantial amount of money. So with that in mind, I submitted a fraud, waste, and abuse report, and I look forward to this council fully prosecuting that complaint in accordance with City Ordinance Section 62.02, which mandates the establishment of an internal committee to investigate this gross waste. We, the taxpayers, appreciate your attention to this matter and I plan on relentlessly following up at every opportunity until this problem has been dealt with. Wow, what a performance with that big breakout into the podcasting sphere. Congrats on the 700 views. I heard your Quack Doctor boyfriend refer to me as an out-of-towner seconds after hearing me state I'm a Palm Bay resident. It's no wonder he's no longer employed at Florida Tech. I'd imagine they're questioning what affirmative action mail he got his diploma printed at. I hope your shared joblessness is strengthening that bond. A word of advice for your aspiring podcast career, your self-inflicted martyrdom is in jeopardy if you're removed for fraud or recalled in an election. I'd recommend quitting, telling your Nazi friends the woke left Palm Bay forced you out, and watch the grift donations flow in. It's hilarious watching you walk back your comments, couching terms like Hindu-Americans, but your rabid Nazi followers are enraged. You're not going to be able to maintain your council position and keep them happy, so please quit while you're ahead and focus on other hobbies. Thanks for your time. Good night and follow your leader.
Good evening. Kristin Lanzana, Northwest Palm Bay. I'm not here tonight to raise awareness on an ever-expanding system bent on surveilling our every move or to fight some far-off cow pasture with hidden potential to provide recreation for our southern residents. No, tonight I'm here as a concerned neighbor because last week, my street and many others in Northwest Palm Bay was under nearly two feet of water. So we need to talk about what's happening because it's made me wonder, if this is what happens with just one day of rain, what's going to happen during our next hurricane? Our neighborhood is at the intersection of Jupiter and Emerson. As we made our way through the floodwaters, we saw a septic tank that had floated out of the ground, cars crashing into ditches, and a school bus dropping kids off in a river of water. Thankfully, Public Works had just been out to clear the main culverts a week before, so, sorry, a week or so before the storm. However, we clearly need to do more. I'm speaking to the city and the residents. If your ditch is overgrown and shallow, consider clearing it out. Don't sit around and say the city should take care of this. How many miles of canals and swales do they already have to maintain? We can also pitch in to do our part. Now, as a city, what are you doing to ensure that the water can flow from our roads into the canals? And was there anything being done to ensure that the canals can divert the water flow properly? The truth is, what happened in the northwest section of our city wasn't just heavy rain. It was a result of years of development decisions, building higher and further west, in some cases on land that was once wetlands, which used to absorb and redirect the water safely. But when you build on the wetlands, what do you expect? The water has nowhere else to go and it will settle at the lowest point, which unfortunately seems to be our older established neighborhoods. I've been coming to these meetings for months now and it seems there's a pattern. We keep putting aside the needs of our current residents to pave the way for future taxpayers, all while undercutting everyone because if we can't handle the growth we already have, what makes us think we can handle more? If we want people to believe that Palm Bay is the greatest city on earth, then we need to treat it as such. We need to take care of the infrastructure and provide for the people who already live here. Only then can we truly claim that title. I'm asking that before any further development is approved, we pause to address the flooding, the drainage, and the infrastructure that is already failing us. I truly believe everything happens for a reason and I realize that this flood wasn't just water, it was a wake-up call. I've been speaking out over the overdevelopment and protecting our natural spaces and this flood brought it all together, right at my front door. Maybe this is his reminder that our role as leaders and neighbors is to be good stewards, to care for what we already have been given before building more. If nothing else, I hope this message shows that others, that when God calls you to plant seeds, sometimes you don't see the reason right away, but when the rain comes, everything he's been preparing finally starts to grow. Thank you for your time. God bless Palm Bay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for always getting my name right. You're one of the few people that actually knows how to pronounce it. Christine Judakis, 792 Lee Road, Southwest Palm Bay, 32908. Couple of things. Mr. Morton, when you're speaking, can you please get the marbles out of your mouth? Sitting right here, we can't understand what you're saying. You talk to the microphone like this and you sound like the old Charlie Brown's teacher. That's all we can hear. Please try to be a little bit clearer in your speaking. Commission, I would like to commend you on doing the right thing two weeks ago. And I'm hoping that tonight you still have the spine that you had two weeks ago and you continue to do the right thing as far as Commissioner Landjevan goes. The fact that he put the city on the hook for $25,000 for his little rally, the fact that he put our name out there to support a white nationalist and made it like the whole city was behind it, wrong. And I know I've said this before, when you're an elected representative, you're elected to represent the whole community, not just those that you agree with, those that you like, those that think the way you do. You're elected to represent an entire community. I was the lone white girl on a commission full of black people in a city that was full of black people. I couldn't go around deciding, oh, I only want to take care of this resident because they live next door to me and not the residents, the rest of the 17,000 residents that we had. I'm just asking you all to please remember that you have an entire community that you represent and do the right thing. Thank you.
That concludes the cards, ma'am.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. We are now on the consent agenda. Council members wish to pull an item?
Item number four, please.
All right, so we're pulling item number four on the consent. Any other items, gentlemen? I need a motion.
Some motion.
I got a motion by Councilman Hammer, seconded by Councilman Johnson. So the motion is all items on consent except item number four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. Well, okay. What item was it?
New business number one?
We haven't gotten there yet. Oh, yes, ma'am, we haven't. That's been moved to in the rear of the agenda. So we're now on public hearing number three?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
The following items are quasi-judicial in nature. Public hearings, agenda items, numbers three and five. Any person who wishes to speak on such a matter must sign a speaker card, which contains a sworn oath to tell the truth. Any individual addressing the council must state his or her name and confirm that a speaker card has been signed. Attorneys who are appearing on behalf of a party and not providing testimonial evidence are not considered witnesses and need not be sworn. Counsel should disclose any ex parte communication by disclosing the subject matter of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place. The order of this proceeding will be as follows. First, staff will make his presentation.
Ma'am, stand fast. If you guys are having conversations, you're more than welcome to take those conversations outside these chambers. Our city attorney is now speaking. Carry on, ma'am.
Followed by the applicant, then any other interested party. Any speaker may be subject to cross-examination by the council or any other interested party. Any other person may speak for a maximum of three minutes. The applicant will then be allowed concluding remarks. The quasi-judicial body may modify the time limits on its own motion or upon the request of a party to the proceeding. The hearing will then be closed and no additional testimony or argument will be allowed. The council will then deliberate in public. At the end of deliberation, a council member will make a motion on the application to bring the matter to a vote. Every council member is then free to vote in favor or against the motion. Ordinance 2025-48. An ordinance of the city of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Palm Bay by changing the zoning of property from GU, General Use Holding District, and AU, Agricultural Residential, Brevard County, to RS3, Single Family Residential District, which property is located north of Willowbrook Street in the vicinity southwest, the intersection of St. John's Heritage Parkway and Mariloma Boulevard, and legally described herein, providing for a change of the zoning map, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing and defer to Mr. Morton.
I have nothing new to add at this moment in time. I do have a suggestion if this moves towards approval for a condition. We have staff here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Yes, sir. Carry on. Carry on.
I know the last council meeting, we were discussing the right-of-way and everything being paid for by the developer themselves, as well as utilities, as well as everything that goes on with this to where there's no taxpayer burden on this whatsoever. Is that still, is that still a go?
That is, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So speaker cards, Deputy Mayor?
Craig.
Craig Hotop.
Craig Hotop, 490 Center Lake Drive, Palm Bay.
Yeah, could you bring that microphone up?
Yeah, certainly. Craig Hotop, four-star.
Thank you.
Just here to answer any questions.
Just here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Don't see any, sir. Next speaker card?
Ken Delgado.
You'll have an opportunity to come back and...
Ken Delgado, 154 Angelo Route, Southeast Palm Bay. I just have a question, because I'm not understanding something, not just for three and five, but on quite a few of the other ones that are here. In reference to changing, rezoning the properties, and in some cases, it says rezoning from the planned, the planned, what do you all call it? The city comprehensive plan future. And the question I have is really just simple. Where's the disconnect, or how do we get from an overall planning that so much effort was placed to make it, and then we turn around and then we rezone? Is it in line with the goal or the vision that we had when they presented that city planning process? What is it? Is it in line with that, and that's why we have to rezone it? Or are we taking what was proposed and saying, you know what, I know what we proposed, but we're going to change it now? And so I don't know which of the two it is. Is it putting it in line, or are we just deciding that though we had some great minds create this future planning, now we're just going to change it depending on who wants to come and change it? That's the question.
Yeah, this is a little different, Pastor Ken, but I think he's going to share it with you. Come on. There's a little bit of history here.
So with the current item that we're hearing, two weeks ago, you read on second reading the annexation of this property. And because it lied within the county and not the city limits...
I just wanted to make sure Pastor Kenny's listening. Okay, carry on.
By laying within the county jurisdiction and now within the city, when it's annexed into the city, we must put it on our zoning map and future land use map. So in the case of this public hearing item, it did not have a designation that exists on the city map. So that's why we're...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, counsel?
Just a question for the city manager, what that condition recommendation was.
Thank you. The condition is if you vote to approve, that it's held in advance pending the execution, successful execution of a TIF, Transportation Impact Fee Agreement.
And you need that as part of the motion?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So any other questions? All right. So at this time, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-48 in advance based on the pending TIF agreement.
Thank you. I've got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Seconded by Councilman Hammer. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. We're now on item number four. Ms. Smith?
Ordinance 2025-41. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the 2045 Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from public semi-public PSP to moderate density residential, MDR, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm opening the public hearing, asking Mr. Morton to present the case.
I have nothing to add new to this. We do have growth here. If you have any questions or would like a presentation.
Okay. Come on in.
So unlike the last item we just heard, this item is within the city limits. It has a current future land use designation of public semi-public, and the applicant is requesting to have that changed to moderate density residential, to have complete use and compatibility with the current zoning. Public semi-public is not what is compatible at this time, so it makes sense to have a designation for a residential use. The particulars of this request include 11.66 acres, and the plan is to construct 116 residential units. In the staff report I've provided, I gave you a comparison of what's currently allowed, which would be zero units in total because of the public semi-public designation, and up to 116 units would be permitted with the moderate density residential land use. At the Planning and Zoning Board hearing, staff recommended that a land use of low-density residential be suggested as an alternative to what's being proposed by the applicant, and that was denied by the applicant's representative. They didn't accept that offer. What staff did was they looked at the review criteria for a comp plan amendment, and we refer to those as the factors of analyses. The factors of analyses completed by staff within and of itself determine that while single-family residents next to the subject property would be compatible with townhomes, which is considered a single-family in our code, there were still other provisions in the factors of analyses that didn't comply with staff's interpretation of the land development code as well as the comprehensive plan. I can give those particulars if you'd like to hear them, and that is the end of my presentation.
So what would, what can, what can it be used for now, those 11 acres?
Right now, they effectively can't do anything because the zoning isn't compatible with the future land use, which is why I would suggest that low-density residential land use be more appropriate for this. The moderate density is up to 10 units to the acre, and it's a significant difference going from zero to 116.
So low-density being...
Low-density, our low-density residential allows up to five dwelling units per acre. So it's actually would be doubled what you, if you approved low-density residential on this instead of the moderate density, it would be five units to the acre versus the 10 units per acre that the applicant is requesting.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Otherwise, okay. All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Councilman Johnson, any questions? Okay, is the applicant here to present their case?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Kim Rosenka with the law firm of Lacy Rosenka, here on behalf of San Kafa Group LLC's behalf. With me tonight is Pedro Vasant. He is a representative of San Kafa Group. Jim McKnight, who is an expert planner with over 30 years of experience in urban planning. James Taylor, professional engineer with Kimley Horn. Anna Saunders, a professional engineer, attorney, engineer of record with BSE LJA. We are here because the desire of San Kafa Group is to build townhomes. We do have a PowerPoint which needs to be pulled up as well. But to begin, the use requested is a single-family use. It's townhomes. It's a single-family platted townhomes. Currently, the property can't be utilized for anything because the future land use and the zoning categories are inconsistent. Even if the flu was residential, only two homes could be built there possibly, because we can't subdivide it because we don't have power, we don't have sewer and water. So the townhome project will bring sewer and water to this site to help expand the utilities for Palm Bay and will be on the cost of the developer. Again, the reason for the change is the inconsistency. There's been this public semi-public for a very long time. This is a 1961 plat of Port Malabar done by General Development. Don't know exactly what the intent was, but nothing's developed there since it was platted in 1961. Semi-public is not appropriate in this location because who wants a school there? I mean, maybe they want one, but the traffic for a school would be substantially worse than what we are looking at as 102 townhomes at most. San Kafa does desire to bring the townhomes. This will create value on land that has absolutely no value right now. It will extend services for the city, will add impact fees and taxes paid to the city. If the city requires road improvements, which we don't believe it does, I don't know if the report made it to you or not, that's why I've handed it to you. James Taylor will testify that the road is not deficient. This will not have any impact on the road systems. The city consultant said it will, but if it's already deficient, that doesn't fall on us. You can't deny us because the road's already deficient. As I mentioned to you at the September 18th City Council meeting, when I asked for the continuance till now, so we can meet with staff, we did meet with staff. We completely disagree with their facts of analysis. We think their factors of analysis are conclusory. They did not address what Jen McKnight put in the factors of analysis, and we believe that you ought to consider why they were so, this just doesn't meet the criteria without any explanation. The idea of infill was completely overlooked. We did bring this up with staff, and still this is an infill project. It's a vacant piece of land around developed land. It's particularly infill. I provided you a set of documents. It starts with Section 163.3164 from the Community Planning Act. Your code doesn't have character or compatibility defined. So we've gone to the state statute. They reference it, although inappropriately in the factors of analysis, it was referenced at planning and zoning. Compatibility means a condition of land use that can coexist in proximity without unduly negatively impacting another use. The use is single-family. This use is not multifamily. This use is not an adult entertainment. It is a use, single-family to single-family, which is always deemed as compatible. When you're talking about land uses, you're talking about things such as churches and correctional facilities and fuel stations and pet daycare. These are all things you specify in your code as land uses. This is single-family to single-family. This is borne out in your land use comprehensive plan and also in your land development regulations. On page two of the packet, we currently are near low-density residential, which is single-family homes. We're seeking moderate-density residential, which is also single-family homes. These two land categories don't distinguish between attached or detached. So single-family to single-family is definitely compatible. Also, your code, your land development, excuse me, your future land use says transitional areas. It doesn't necessarily say next to each other. It's an area that's transitioning. This is vacant that needs to be developed with an infill project that has to spend money to bring water and sewer to it. Page three, this residential transition is brand-new. There is no other residential transition, RT210, which we're seeking in your city. So this is new. This is something that was developed specifically for townhomes. Your schedule of use is Section 173.021. When you look at RS2, which this is currently, and RT10, which we're seeking, the uses are nearly identical. The only difference is Also, too, what hasn't been addressed, oh, also buffers. You have landscaping and buffering requirements. If you do not think they're sufficient, as your code says, you can ask us to do more. You can make this infill project have more buffers if that's what you choose to do. But your perimeter landscaping and buffer requirements put single-family duplex and townhomes all in the same category. They do distinguish multifamily later on down in this ordinance. City staff did not address at all your private property rights element, which has become very important throughout the state. The right of property to be physically possessed and controlled, the right of property owners to maintain and develop and improve their property. We believe that is an issue here because we can't develop this property right now at all. What I provided to you is the concept plan that was provided at our community meeting. It's not in your packet. For some reason, it didn't make it into the community report that we did submit. The Kimley Horn report is attached for you. The school board report that says that there is consistency, there is capacity in the school system. And then there are two pictures of townhome renderings that were supplied to the citizens at the community meeting. We had boards for that. So I just wanted to clarify that those were all presented. We actually had two community meetings. Mr. Hammer was at the first one, and we did a second one just for this project. With that, I'd turn this over to Jim McKnight for the PowerPoint.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Jim McKnight. I am the planning consultant on this project. I have been doing land planning both the public and private sectors for the last 45 years in Brevard County. This is an unusual piece of property. I will grant that. And there are more in this city like this. There's actually four or five that I'm aware of. So I don't want to repeat a lot of what was said. Make sure I do this right. How about that? What Ms. Rosenka has said, I think the issue comes down to compatibility. Do we think single-family attached is transitioned to single-family detached? In normal planning circles, yes, that would be considered a normal transition. This one is more of an inside-out than an outside-in, okay? I know in Waterstone, when we did, I did that project, when we got that approved, it was multifamily that moved up against single-family. It was more of an outside-in approach. This is a little different, but it's still the same principle of a transitory comprehensive plan change. And in the comp plan, you have the residential two and the residential three, which is basically low-density, moderate-density. And they're side-by-side, and it even says it in there. If you read it, and I don't like reading to y'all, but it says moderate-density residential, transitional areas of increasingly urban, moderate residential character. That's what you're talking about in the transition. So again, I'm not going to read to you. Let's move along. The intent, what we're seeking is RT10, which is, again, not been used yet in Palm Bay, but it was set up for a specific purpose, missing middle housing options that were not available in Palm Bay to give people the opportunity for homeownership. Even within, which I'll allude to in a minute, your own housing element has some specific language relative to that. And this is it. If you'll look at Policy HSG-1.1C, it says in there amend the LDC to permit missing middle housing options in select low-residential areas. This is, this defines what we're looking at here. And I think it's just, it's unusual. I don't say it's not, but it meets what we're talking about here. And we're not talking about a huge piece of property. We're talking about a little over 11 acres. But I think, again, it meets the comprehensive plan housing element, which has not been addressed by staff. And I want to say I've had good conversations with staff. They've been, you know, good information provided back, and I've given them information. So it has been, at least we've listened to each other. I will say that. Not going to go over the dimensional standards. This is the property. This is what we're talking about in a residential area. But if you look at it from a bigger picture, look how close we are to some industrial area, some commercial area. Okay? It is an urbanized area. And when you look at that, and you look at infill development under your own definition, okay, in the code, which is in 171, it's the process of developing vacant or... okay, in the code, which is in 171, it's the process of developing vacant or underused parcels within existing urbanized areas that are mostly built out and which is being built in effect of filling in the gaps. That's from your own code. If you look at Florida statute, it even goes on to say, urban infill means the development of vacant parcels in otherwise built-up areas where public facilities such as sewer systems, and we are being required to extend the water and sewer. Roads, schools, and recreation areas are already in place, and the average residential density is at least five dwelling units per acre. Well, that's what right now the area has, is the comprehensive plan designation of five dwelling units per acre. And even in the housing strategy for the state, they talk about community-led planning that focuses on urban infill, flexible zoning. Those are two of the first two things they talk about in the Florida state statutes. I think it's important to recognize that the, some, one of the disagreements in staff was, is it urban or not? Well, Palm Bay is clearly the largest city in this county. They're a part of a statistical metropolitan area that is defined. And being the largest city in that SMSA is, makes Palm Bay an urban area. So we can't really debate that. I think compatibility is really the issue that comes up. Is it compatible? And I think what we're looking at from our standpoint is, all the definitions, both in your own code, state statutes, say that this is a transitory use designation between moderate-density and low-density. And it's appropriate to do that. And this just shows you the current piece of property, the zoning to the north, and also, excuse me, the future land use to the north, the residential surrounding the property. And again, same thing here on the zoning. And I think she gave you a copy of the site plan. And I know this is a conceptual plan. Obviously, buffers and things like that can be changed to, you know, meet what needs to be met for appropriate buffers. Who's going to talk about, first Kim? You're going to talk about the utilities?
Yeah, you got more?
Not yet, not right now. I reserve the right to come back.
Again, Kim Rosanka, this is just a diagram of where the water and sewer will be coming up from the, from the south. The green is obviously the sewer. It's about a half a mile. And then the blue is a little less than that, but this will indeed be, be developed fully on the cost of the developer. This was the fire station. It's right up there on Foundation. Just to let you know, it is close by, 0.8 miles. That's been a big issue in the past, that there's not fire safety. And that is currently very close. The issue is stormwater drainage. We've heard that here tonight. People are getting flooded. They're worried about being flooded. As you all may know, there are higher standards coming for stormwater in December, so this will actually have to meet the higher standards. So our engineer, Anna, said that perhaps that stormwater pond is not going to be sufficient for this development, but that will all be done by the engineer, the stormwater drainage. It will hold its own water. It will take the water that's coming out of its property currently. That's what your code requires. That's what state law requires. So flooding should not be an issue. And then transportation will be addressed by James Taylor with Kim Lee Horn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, James Taylor, Kim Lee Horn Associates. I'm the transportation engineer for the applicant. I've been practicing in this field for about 20 years, professional license in 2009. So when we look at the site, we're looking at meeting every standard for the city. We did meet with the city early to talk about methodology for the traffic statement for this rezoning application. And we then used the statewide travel demand modeling and guidance from FDOT per the requirements of the city and per industry standard. We also used trip generation data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers IT Manual, and you may have heard that acronym at the podium before, and the latest and greatest highway capacity manual procedures for evaluating capacity at both roadway segments and also at the intersections. What the report provides is the project trip generation, how many trips that we expect to forecast out of this development at full buildout of 116 townhomes, and then assigning those trips to all the study area facilities, the roadways, and also the intersections. And then we look at the existing conditions in the area based on the counts and compare that to both the future conditions with and without the project to truly isolate the project impacts for this. The TIA was then reviewed by the city, their consultant. All those comments were addressed. When we came to P&amp;Z, we did hear concerns from the public that the counts that were used for the initial traffic study were from June of 2024. They asked that we update and that we take those counts while school was in session. So we then went out last month, took some new counts. Now, that's what you have in your packet tonight, is that updated traffic for those new counts. And then we have acknowledged that additional analysis may be required to accompany the site plan. So the conclusions of the report, this project generates about 55 AM peak hour and 66 PM peak hour trips. So what does that mean? Perspective, 55 or 60 trips over the course of an hour? That's like sitting at the driveways and counting one car every minute. Ms. Rosinka mentioned how that compares to if a charter school would come on the site with 1,000 units, what that would look like. This is about a fifth of that traffic, I'm sorry, 5% of that traffic in the AM peak hour. The project impacts as we evaluate-
So I have to ask you a question-
Yes, please.
Because that's the second time I've heard this, right? So I have to, we're comparing this to a school, right? It is actually institutional. So let's say it's zoned correctly, right? Let's just go by that assumption. What I'm hearing you say is that if we put in all these units, the traffic count will be less if I had a school there.
Correct.
That's the second time I hear this. However, when it's school time, it's different than on a 24-hour clock. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm a little tossed with what you're saying, and it's, it's not as palatable. When I heard it the first time, yeah. Now I hear it the second time, and I'm like thinking, I do see the traffic increase during school hours, right? In the beginning, in the end, not on holidays, not during the summer. So that's where I'm having an issue. But carry on. How does that equate? How can you help me understand that?
Yes, sir. Let me, let me dive a little bit deeper than that. So your traditional commuter times are between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM in the morning, and then again, at 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at night. This is what we base our traffic analysis on, those peak hours when we're doing these sorts of studies. The AM for the school coincides with the AM of the commuter peak hour. So in that hour, if you look at a school, you're going to see more than 1,000 trips as opposed to this development, which is about 55 trips. In the PM commuter hour, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, that school is not intense, as intense as it is in the AM. In the PM peak, we have typically some after-school programs, some sports, maybe there's a daycare involved with the school. Those trips would be much less than the AM, but still more than the site would generate in the PM peak hour by about half.
Okay. Now run that scenario with me as a church, right? Because I probably, you know, 11 acres, 11-plus acres for a church in the neighborhood. You're going to have Sundays, right? You may have another time that you're having a service, right? Mid-week service, but how does that compare?
We didn't evaluate that specifically before tonight, but my guess is that the church would generate less than the site on a typical weekday, but again, on Sunday.
Thank you. Carry on. I think Councilman Hammer has a question as well.
Yeah, I had a question. I see we're talking about the 55 AM and 65, or 66 PM peak.
Yes, sir.
This is turning out onto a two-lane residential road, correct?
Based on the concept that was presented, and again, that concept can change between now and then, the traffic would 100% access Uster. Then it would either go north up to Union or south to Alcazar before it then went to San Felipe. We assume that 100% of the traffic would do that. Once we get into the weeds, it's probably more that some is going to go up to Foundation Park, the back way. But even with that scenario where we were conservative in the study, then you're correct. You would see 66 trips in the PM peak hour on San Felipe as a result of this project. So-
So it's going to turn onto a two-lane residential road, then turn onto another two-lane residential road? In the back way, it's going to turn onto a third two-lane residential road?
Correct.
Okay. And I like the numbers here, but here it says, "The proposed St. Cova at Green Estates Development is proposed to consist of 116 townhome dwelling units located in the city of Palm Bay, Florida. The project is anticipated to generate 833 daily trips." That's on your traffic study, right?
Yes, sir.
No more questions?
Thank you. Carry on, sir. Just carry on.
Sure. So when we're looking at the study area for this, per the procedures of the city, we evaluate significant impact on these adjacent roadways. This project has no significant impacts by the definition of the code. It's less than 5% of any of the capacity of San Felipe. And then when you're looking at the intersections, which is another way to evaluate this project, and you average the delay for a vehicle at these intersections at San Felipe, it's less than one second difference than today's delay. And I'll stand by for further questions.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Johnson, stand by.
Thank you, Mayor. I was listening in regards to the traffic impact, and when looking at the report from Kim Lee Horn, it emphasizes, which sounds like the same thing from what I'm hearing from the applicant, emphasizes, you know, during the PM peak period, if no, if no, the impact is minimal, but you don't see any reference in regards to the AM peak hours. So I wanted to hear a clarification on that. Is it more than what meets for the AM peak time? Because it's not, it's not included in the Kim Lee Horn conclusion on page six.
So when we generate that, when we forecast the trip generation from the site, we look at AM and PM. We take that higher number, and that's what we move forward with, with additional detailed exercise. Because the PM peak hour was the conservative time, you don't see the AM proceeding into the more detailed analysis.
Okay. Because I know, and I think the rest of the council can relate too, our AM peak time at San Felipe tends to be the most extreme. Everybody's going from San Felipe trying to pour on to I-95. People are merging lanes to try to cut over and cut people off onto, to get onto I-95, or trying to cut through to get to Babcock from San Felipe to Malabar. So from what I've seen, and I know we have the data in front of us, but from what I've seen, the AM time period is the more intense time period within our city limits.
Yeah. And Councilman Johnson is spot on. When, when you go out in the morning, San Felipe, and then whether you go out to Babcock Street, you're going to run into another nightmare. So that's, that was a great point, Councilman Johnson. Did you have an additional question?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Carry on, sir.
So that's the end of my, my conclusion. I'll just say one thing. When we, when we went through this process of doing the methodology with the staff, getting the review, answering comments, then doing the traffic statement, we were in agreement that if in the future, staff wanted to see additional analysis when we go to a site plan and have a fully vetted-out concept, then we can return to this. The project does pay transportation impact fees, which go to the city roadways. And if those traffic impact fees are not enough to mitigate any deficiencies, Florida statute 163.3180 allows them to mitigate those impacts through prop share or an improvement to the roadway. And this applicant will do that.
Thank you.
Again, Kim Rosanka. To Councilman Johnson's question on page seven of the new report, which I'm hoping he has, it does say that the AM peak hours are 55, and that's 14 inbound and 41 outbound. That's on page seven. It also does say that the St. Cova at Green Estates Development is not anticipated to negatively impact the surrounding roadway network. As mentioned, the report that was provided by the outside consultant for the city said that this roadway was already deficient. Mr. Taylor addressed that in his report, saying that must have been a mistake because the traffic did not double in one year based upon what the statistics were that the county used. Regardless, the proportionate fair share ordinance says if the road's already deficient, you can't put that on us and you can't, you can't deny the development because the roadway's already deficient. I can read that if necessary, but that is what it says. School concurrency, that seems to be an issue. Planning and zoning used it randomly as a reason to deny this project. If you look at the school concurrency letter that was just provided to you, it was also in your packet dated April 21, 2005. This is preliminary. Before we went to plat, we would have to do it again, and they would readdress the concurrency if necessary. But currently, Stone Magnet Middle School is projected to have enough capacity. The Columbia Elementary in Bayside does not, but based upon the interlocal agreement between the city and the county and all of the cities and the school board, they look at additional, or the adjacent concurrency service areas, and there is sufficient capacity, the total projected student membership, to accommodate the students from this development. With that, we can take questions or reserve our seven minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any questions, Council? Thank you, ma'am. We'll call you back up after the last speaker.
Thank you.
I think at this point, anyone in the audience wish to speak? I don't need speaker cards for this one. Speaker cards will be necessary for item five. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Okay, you're number one, sir. You're number two, and you're number three. The first three. Ms. Rosanka, you'll come back. Carry on.
Roger Adams, 968 Ulster Avenue Southeast. Good evening. Good evening. My wife and I live directly across from the Ulster parcel. Tonight, you gentlemen have a very unique opportunity because the parcel in question has a very unique location. Unlike the other apartment complexes that have sprung up directly off of San Felipe, this parcel has an extremely serious ingress and egress challenge. Without actually visiting the location, the access challenge is not readily apparent, nor is it made obvious in the developer's plot plan, which utilizes an extremely outdated aerial view and does not illustrate the access routes at all. Therefore, my appeal for you to listen to Councilman Hammer, he lives in our community and knows the truth of this matter. I'm a retired aerospace engineer, but as they say, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand this. The Ulster Avenue parcel is unique because it is boxed in by small secondary streets and does not have a direct access path. After leaving the main arteries, access to the parcel is by way of multiple small secondary streets. And in spite of the developer pointing to a note on the street map that says 50-foot paved right-of-way, in actuality, the 20-foot wide streets can't be widened due to houses on either side of all the streets. That right-of-way note includes the 15-foot utility line allotments on each side and not intended for street widening. The two main access arteries are San Felipe and Babcock. The ingress to the parcel, for ingress to the parcel, the Babcock traffic will turn west onto Foundation Boulevard and then turn south on Underhill to get to either Union Street or further south to Alcazar Street. They will then turn west toward Ulster where they will compete with the traffic coming from the west off of San Felipe on either Union or Alcazar for the final turn onto Ulster. Of course, this will create a serious backup on Underhill, and some frustrated drivers from Babcock will continue west on Foundation for a southbound turn onto the backed-up San Felipe. Another option for this, those stuck on Underhill will be to bail out to the west on either Talleyrand or Cano to race through additional secondary streets to approach Ulster from the north. Or if they bail off Underhill too early onto Sagabloom, they'll have to wait for a left-turn opportunity to go south on San Felipe. So at least twice each workday, we'll have a madcap road race on small, multiple- So at least twice each workday, we'll have a madcap road race on small, multiple small secondary streets through neighborhoods with children. It's a perfect recipe for traffic congestion catastrophes. This was recognized by your PZ board, and they wisely voted against zoning changes for this parcel. Therefore, I beg you to listen to Councilman Hammer, as he is your perfect eyewitness. Please vote against this zoning change. Also, for future reference.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you. Next speaker? Carry on, man.
Good evening. Um, my name is Kim Evers, and I live on Alcazar Street. I butt up to this property. And while it all sounds well and good with their, their, their reports that say they won't affect the traffic and everything else, I've lived there sixteen years. To try to make a left-hand turn onto San Felipe is almost impossible. Coming out of there, to make a right-hand turn, you have to sit and wait. This hundred and sixteen units will bring approximately two hundred and thirty more cars into the area. This is one in two miles of Columbia Elementary School, where our children have to walk. So there's even more, more cars coming around where our children have to walk to school. It's not, it's not a good idea. The property is completely surrounded by single-family, one-story homes. So they're wanting to put in two-story townhomes in the middle of our established neighborhood of single, single-family homes. I'm going to have, I've lived in my house seventeen years, and I'm going to have somebody out on their balcony looking in my backyard. As it was already stated, the planning and zoning voted this down five to zero. They brought up the impact, the impacts that it would have on the traffic, and the schools in the area are in, at capacity, but adjacent schools are available. So what are you going to tell these people buying these townhomes? Yes, you can buy this home, but your kid can't go to that school? That's, it's, it's zoned for? It just, it doesn't make any sense, and I hope you take into consideration the people that have been in the area before approving this.
Thank you. Who was speaking number three? Who was speaking number three? There you are, sir. You moved.
I was trying to be ready for it. Doug Hook, Mayor Posse Drive Northeast. While I am on the Palm Bay Sustainability Advisory Board, I would like to clarify that my comments tonight on this matter are actually personal, um, and not necessarily speaking on the board's behalf. As regards to changing the, uh, land use from public semi-public to moderate density residential, it immediately looked up what my wife asked me when I did join the Sustainability Advisory Board, which was, why are you doing this? And that question was answered rather jokingly, as my nature tends to be. I want to be a politician for sandhill cranes and, uh, gopher tortoises. There's not really going to get me a seat on the board at the, uh, City Council, but it'll get me a seat at the Sustainability Advisory Board. So looking at this parcel, we have eleven point six acres, and two and a half acres of that were actually, uh, recognized as being wetlands. And looking at the pictures provided by the developer at the site, um, I went through and looked at all their pictures available. There were pictures of a, uh, some salt palmettos that actually showed flooding to about three or four inches through that wetlands area. And they looked at an impact study as to what kind of animals were actually likely within that zone. Um, and it identified that it was likely, because they didn't actually go in and actually look for them, that there are gopher tortoises and eastern indigo, or eastern indigo snakes, um, both of which are actually protected from the United, are from the state of Florida. And so I wanted to, uh, find out, um, before we move forward with this, because once it gets changed, it's going to be nearly impossible to change it back from general use, or from public semi-public use. There was a lot of talking going on about the impacts of if there was a church to go in, or if there was a school to go in, what that would have on the traffic impact on there. What I would like to propose, what would the traffic impact be if we were to turn that into a mixed-use conservation and public use space, um, to where the community in that area would have a natural park that they could go walking through, enjoy the wetlands area, maybe see a gopher tortoise or two. The school that is nearby could use it as a learning experience. There are other uses that we could use for semi, our public semi-public land that is not a church, that is not a, uh, multi-use family operation, um, that is not going to be a charter school. These kind of things are things that we could move forward with and actually probably not increase the traffic at all. Um, the kids who are walking from school would be able to go play at the park. They'd be able to see a gopher tortoise, interact with it. I see it every day coming out of Riviera Park. Um, there's gopher tortoises in the natural space back behind there, um, and the kids love seeing the gopher tortoises walk up and down the sidewalks there. So I would like to think, I'd like you to consider that as well. We don't necessarily always have to put things that will cause more cars to come onto roads. Thank you.
Raise your hand, number one, or two, three, and four. I think the property owner, uh, would have to do that. I'm thinking a church, because I think a church might use that type of property.
Good evening. My name is David Muallam, and I own this parcel, along with the two other parcels that is going to be heard also tonight. There are many items over here, I think four, five, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. All of these parcels are public semi-public, and the land use is residential, which are not compatible. So we need to make the land use and the zoning compatible, so we can use them for something. Let me bring something else to your attention that we have overlooked. It used to be Palm Bay was very affordable. Those days are gone. Now, nowadays, when they build a new house over here, it's going to be over three hundred thousand dollars, pushing four hundred thousand dollars, sometimes higher. And it has come to a point that most of our citizens, a lot of our workers, police officers, teachers, firefighters, et cetera, people that they provide all the services, they cannot afford to buy a house anymore. As a realtor, what the people want, what the majority of the people want, that they're working-class people, a house not more than two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's why the housing, it is the shape it is. The, as you know, the labor has gone up, the construction people, Mexicans and such, they're hiding or deporting. Material is going up, the inflation, the tariffs, and the land, we are running out. So we have sixty to seventy-five thousand lots in Palm Bay. They're all quarter of an acre, general development create them. And we put the housing on them that people cannot afford. Now, here, they're proposing something that people can afford. And somebody wants to turn in this into a park. Hey, I own it. Do you know how much taxes I pay? I've been paying taxes for twenty-five years. I like to use my land before I pass away. Turn it into something useful. You want to buy it and make it into a park? Super. The traffic, you know, we got a prob- problem with the traffic. If they build a hundred fifteen homes, you're going to have the same problem than if they build a hundred fifteen townhouses. Probably townhouses are less traffic because they're less density. So I encourage you to approve these projects so people can afford housing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who is number two?
Hi, my name is Lou DiBonifazio, Albit, twenty-nine sixty-one Fisher Avenue. I'm here because I'm contesting this rezoning and this whole project. This is one of three projects that they're going to be building along San Felipe. This is, uh, Green Estates. They're going to be building one in Greenview, and they're going to be building Oasis. And all three of these projects are the same concept. They're going to have these townhomes, these block townhomes that they are going to say is compatible with the neighborhood, and they aren't. They're two stories, there's ten units in each unit, and here you have residential homes built all along the perimeter. It's far from being compatible, no matter how they try to twist it. A person comes out there and sees a townhome, ten units per acre? It's, it's not compatible. You can't cut it or dice it any other way. And, uh, there's all these three complexes that they're want to build. They all come, they're within blocks of San Felipe. This one's within a block, Green, um, Green Estates is within San Felipe area. Then you have the one that I'm going to be speaking with in a couple of weeks, Oasis, that's near San Felipe. And you got one near St. Andreas, near San Felipe. So you have all these big units, all these multi-high-density complexes, they're going to all empty out on San Felipe and use that roadway. It can't handle the traffic now. They're not only considering the, uh, this complex when they do the traffic study, but how about all the construction that's currently under, uh, that's being built now? All the new homes that, the permits that have been passed and the homes that are on construction, they aren't considered, when they do the traffic study, none of that is taken in consideration. They're just taking the traffic study for this one little complex that looks like a compound, what, a hundred and sixteen units in there, living units in there. It doesn't, it isn't compatible with the neighborhood. It doesn't, uh, uh, it doesn't, it's two stories high, it's going to have a heck of a traffic impact, and they try to sell it by bringing, you know, they'll buy the, they'll pay for the sewage and the water and everything, but it's going to have the impact on. And here they're going to be assessed again in a quicker timeframe to pay to be a hookup. There's already three apartment buildings near the, uh, on San Felipe that haven't come on board yet. You got the, the Palm Breeze, you got the Parks of Palm Bay and Isles apartment. When they come on board and have all those additional residents and the traffic, and plus this, it's going to be unbearable. You know, they're going to come in there, they're going to impact, they're going to, going to lower the, uh, the, the, uh, the value of the existing homes, and it's going to lower our property value. What is the developer going to give the existing homeowners? Because our property values have suffered. They're not, we're not being compensated in any way. They're making the big bucks.
Thank you. Next speaker? Who was, who was three? Okay, okay.
Robert Boudreaux, thirteen oh-one Sahara Street, southeast Palm Bay, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the council. Uh, three years ago, after my wife passed away, I relocated to Palm Bay. Let me paint you a picture of our neighborhood. It's, uh, it's quiet, uh, conveniently located to everything I need, away from the noisy railroad tracks, about two miles away from the commercial area and Route ninety-five. All single-family homes, no HOA, and lots of space between homes. Every day, kids ride their, uh, tricycles on the street. People walk their dogs and walk along, along the street. It's very relaxing, and the neighbors look out for each other. The reason I'm here tonight, I'm opposed to the zoning change request for the proposed, uh, townhouses community on Ulster Avenue. Here's why. It would be located, uh, down the street from my house, and I've talked to four realtors who've said that it will also lower the property valuable, value immediately in my neighborhood. I would like to, uh, it would be built near existing homes at a height above the homes themselves. So it'd be just like their privacy would have a drone hovering above their house twenty-four-seven. When you pack people together, you have a problem where you need more police presence, and you'll have a burden for the, uh, fire rescue. It's my understanding that their traffic study was done back in August of twenty-five, but no school was around in, in August, obviously, and the stall birds weren't back. The traffic will be drastically increased, especially when the parents drive their kids to and from school. On the perimeter road where the development would be, my neighbors have told me they've actually seen tadpoles swimming down the street after a heavy rain. That means the water is nearby and drain, there will be a drainage issue. A couple bought a home right next door to me, okay? They thought this, uh, whole situation with the townhomes had already been squashed. They were surprised and disappointed it's come back to haunt us. The bottom line is, single-family homes would fit in much better on eleven point six acres of this property. Therefore, I respectfully request that you reject this zoning ordinance change in the light of the simple and obvious fact that the proposal development does not ensure compatibility with the area right now. Thank you so much.
Next speaker?
Ken Delgado, one five-four Angelo Road, southeast Palm Bay. Again, here's the question that I had at the first time, the city comprehensive future land, which established what it was. Uh, it was a great professional introduction that they gave us. Uh, I'm glad you can sort it out, because I, I got lost on the, whether it's inside out or outside in, and that they were the same, except they're different, and that there are going to be a transition, though it's the same. And so I'm, I'm lost in the mining of the different laws and what they are supposed to mean, and that's all legal stuff. That's way beyond my pay grade, and I'm glad you guys get paid the big bucks to solve all those equations that they offered us over here. What I do think is, is that I, I've noticed that we're going from, from, uh, uh, moving it up to moderate, not just on one item, but I counted it, one, two, three, four, five, and, and when I add those all together, the five percent with the two percent of the three of the four percent of the two parts of the five parts, I figure that's going to be a lot more cars than what we had projected on the city comprehensive planned future land use. And so if we have already city a comprehensive plan, future plan use, then, then I like it real simple. Did it match it? Is, is it what it was planned for? And if it wasn't what it was planned for, then the question is, what are we planning for? Or do we throw out the comprehensive plan and just start planning? What did this week's planning might be on our mind? Uh, so, uh, my question still has not been answered. Uh, hopefully, we'll get the answer. Is the city comprehensive planned future land use map correct? Is it not correct? Uh, we've heard about the traffic. I just want to make sure my shirt's right side out. And if we can get that good, we're okay. Thank you very much.
Help me, Father. Okay. Okay, um, next set of speakers. Okay. One, two, who else? Okay, the last two speakers? One and two? Okay. And then Ms. Rosenka will come back up.
Hello again. I'm sorry. Kristen Lanzana, Northwest Palm Bay. I heard a lot in that report, and I, I do hear what they're saying. They put a lot of effort into it. We do appreciate that, but I'm not sure where the disconnect is coming in here. Uh, we cannot absorb more growth. The new development, as we said, the traffic reports aren't taking each other into account when there's new developments. The school reports aren't taking each other into account. It's pulling off data from the previous year. So I don't understand how we can keep approving stuff when we don't actually know the impact that it's going to have moving forward. Um, I heard there's going to be a hundred and two townhomes. That's a hundred and two more families coming to the area, which, sure, that's great, but that's another two hundred-plus cars on our roads. As we've seen, San Felipe is already a mess. There's another item on here where we're talking about closing roads on San Felipe, which probably isn't the solution for that either. Um, there's, there's five schools that are going to be impacted here. Columbia, which is right there, can't absorb these students. Bayside is already full. Port Malabar in Turner and Palm Bay. Again, the studies don't take into account what's already been improved. And moving forward, um, Stone Middle School, where they're going to send them, that's thirty minutes away, not even counting for the traffic that we're going to be going through to have to go that far. So that's just. So that's just blows my mind. I don't understand how we can be asking people to come move to these places, but you're going to have to drive over an hour to get your kids to and from school. That's just crazy. I understand, like I said, where they're coming from, but we can't continue to let developers strong-arm us to build more for a profit while leaving the residents to handle the consequences of it. Something's got to give. Thank you.
Sir, sir, what do you get on the mic?
Sorry. I, I clearly wasn't here for this. I was here for the utilities presentation, but it turns out I live right in that area. 1590 Oakfield Avenue. With the rains that we've had currently, my road has been flooded. Me and my neighbors have decided to trench and we are going to direct to a ditch that's off on the side that goes off into that wetland area. So a few things, I'm just going to say ditto to everybody. But one thing I'm wondering about is if we are doing multifamily homes, that includes single roofs, that means HOAs. That is not a single-family home when you are dealing with multiple families under one roof. So I'm not sure how that comes into play here. And then obviously the roads, they did a traffic study from a, what was it, seven to?
Sir?
Sir. Sorry, I, I forget what they said, but basically seven to whatever. I have to leave for work at 6:30, getting on to Babcock already. There's some days it takes me 15 minutes to get to work and there's some days it takes me 25 minutes to get to work. And that's just Babcock now. And there's no snowbirds and all that stuff like they said. One other thing, and I'm totally drawing a blank. So yeah, I guess water and then the multifamily dwellings. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the last speaker, correct? Okay. Madam Rosenko.
I need to take this back and I was trying to do it before it wouldn't. There we go.
Mr. Morton?
I'm being told that Althea from Growth would like to speak. She's got some items that she would like to clarify or rebut, and that should happen before Ms. Rosenko summarizes.
Carry on. So Ms. Althea, Ms. Rosenko, stand fast. I'm going to bring staff back up. And that way you'll, you'll close out, ma'am.
Thank you, Althea Jefferson, Acting Growth Management Director for the record. There's a couple of things that I feel I should put on the record. First of all, you were given a handout with some images and a bubble plan. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you to just, that can't be considered tonight as part of a comprehensive plan amendment. It doesn't go with this type of case. You're not voting on images or layouts of a site plan. We're talking about changes of a land use. So in speaking to townhomes versus, uh, single-family, in our code and as a general definition, attached townhomes are considered, uh, single-family. They're considered single-family units, attached, single-family is what we call them, but those would be townhomes. Staff had no, uh, issue with that. The applicant's representative mentioned that staff did not consider the statutory definition of compatibility, when in fact, specifically for this case, it was taken down to a minute level. And I did have conversations with Mr. McKnight. And where we agreed is that, yes, attached, single-family is compatible with single-family. I said that in my initial statement. The statutory definition of compatibility further states that relative proximity, they can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion, agreed, but in such a way that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted, directly or indirectly. So it's the latter part of that statutory definition that I considered in the staff report when I talked about compatibility. And in fact, there are unduly negatives, both directly and indirectly. While we do have the concurrency for schools, they had to go to a neighboring school to get that concurrency approved through the school board. There is some difference in our consultant that we use for the traffic versus what their consultant has given us. Initially, we were given numbers that were taken in the summer, which is not something that we can accept. And so the indication that some numbers doubled, that could be, uh, what that was about. When we talk about the property rights element that has become quite important here in the state of Florida, staff did take that into account by proposing a low-density residential land use for this site, which does have some sensitivity to property rights for this particular site. In knowing that public, semi-public is not compatible with the zoning. So we did consider the property rights in that, in that regard. Also, there was some talk about, uh, transition versus infill. What I will say is the definition for infill from our code was provided and which is accurate. However, when you look to the statutory definition for infill, it only exists as urban infill. We looked very closely at that definition and even read to you tonight in the wording was that the infill includes vacant land where public facilities are already in existence. While the applicant has indicated that they will hook up to our water and sewer, infill is more related to where vacant land exists and all of the public facilities are already there. This is not infill. This is not infill. And then when we talk about transition, let me go back to public, semi-public use. There was some talk about, uh, schools, churches. Don't forget, public, semi-public also includes government-owned facilities, parks, trails, et cetera, fire stations, police substations, clubs, lodges, all those uses.
Assistant living.
Assistant living as well, right here, are also permitted under public, semi-public. When we talk about changing that so that the property rights of the owner are considered, low-density residential would in fact be compatible with the existing zoning. The MDR future land use is a transitional land use, transition. And in our comprehensive plan, transition is going from a low density to the transition to a high density. That is trended, transition. Or you'd be going from a high density to the transitional project to commercial. There's a transition. It's not just a donut hole of something different, completely surrounded by, uh, single-family residences. So in and of itself, the moderate density is not transitory in that it's twice what's it's surrounded by. I want to make sure I address. I think that was all the notes that I took based on what I heard. I just wanted to get it on the record.
I think Councilman Hammer may have a question.
I heard you mention something about the traffic study. I was kind of wondering about that too. You have 116 units. And even if that's a single person living alone, there, there's only 55 people leaving? In the morning? I, I just, does yours? Well, she said there was a traffic study that doubled that and I'm trying to.
Oh, no, no. The doubling number, when we, the first report that we were given from the applicant, the counts were taken in the summer, which is not something that we can accept because school is not in. And so there was, uh, something from the applicant about doubling the numbers or questioning, uh, our consultant's, uh, report. So I, I wasn't certain, but I thought that the doubling was about the counts. And if that's the case, that was the explanation for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Rosenko.
We did have the wrong power point.
Okay.
See if we get the right one now? Yes, we do. Thank you. Again, Kim Rosenko on behalf of Sync Alpha Group LLC. Infill development, vacant or underused parcels filling in the gaps. Talks about urban areas. This is an urban area. Mr. McKnight said it is. National Geographic says it is. Your code doesn't have anything that says what an urban area. This is an urban area and this is definitely infill. You can say it's not transition, but it's still infill, so it still works under your code. And the private property rights, just randomly saying we should have low-density residential? It's useless. It doesn't do us any good. We can't build a subdivision there without water and sewer. You can build quarter-acre homes, but you can't even do that. You can't do that because you don't have water and sewer. So again, people say it's multifamily. It's not. It's single-family homes. The height, same height RS2 as to RT10. The height is exactly the same. All these people could have two-story zones if they wanted to, they chose not to. So it is compatible based upon the standards.
Order.
So the height standards are identical. Ms. Jefferson says that, that this will unduly negatively impact the area. But she's, she's dead wrong. Our traffic report says traffic is not an issue. The doubling was the issue, the doubling.
Ms. Rosenko, stand fast. I, I'm expecting courtesy from each and every one of you.
The doubling was.
Please, carry on.
The doubling was on page six of the recent Kim Lee Horn report where it talks about the consultant's numbers they used. Year 2023 was 12,000, year 2024 was 20,500. Kim Lee Horn said that's not, that's not reasonable. That can't possibly be correct, that there would be that much of a 71% growth in a single year. The doubling of the, um, traffic, the 52 homes, those are based upon engineering principles that your traffic engineer would use the same too. They haven't reviewed this yet. But again, even if there is impacts, it, your consultant says it's deficient. Florida statutes 163.31805H2B says that a road is determined to be deficient without the profit, the project under review. The cost of correcting that deficiency shall be removed and shall be placed to burden on the city who's responsible to maintain it. So it does not unduly burden. Either it's deficient and it's not our fault, so your traffic engineer report is useless, or our traffic engineer is correct. And if there are impacts, there is a 50-foot road right-of-way. Doesn't matter if there's utilities that's intended for a road. The road can be, um, enhanced, can be expanded. People use it as their own private driveway, but it is indeed a right-of-way. So the reason we've given you the plot plan, we've given you the pictures to show the reason for the change. The comp plan is wrong. The zoning may or not, may or not be, but this property can't be developed unless it's changed any way, shape or form. You want a hospital, there's no church that's offered to buy this from Mr. Mo Alum. So this is, um, what is intended. And the fact that nothing has been built there for so very long is a reason to change. Regarding the traffic in the school, uh, school studies, the traffic does anticipate a growth rate. It's a standard growth rate that even your traffic engineer would use. And the, the growth rate does account for other developments incoming. Again, this is single-family, it's not an apartment. As to schools, the school board follows the inter-local agreement of what's your apart. They look at every development that's been submitted and they calculate the concurrency. Again, we're in concurrency in South Brevard County and dealing with the school board and with your city. You have to mitigate. You can't build if there's no capacity in the schools. You have to mitigate, otherwise it can't be built. So that's something when we would go to site plan, that would be analyzed. So there is no evidence that this unduly impacts anything. So this is compatible based upon single-family to single-family. If you look at the, uh, traffic memorandum, it does say the inbound and outbound for the peak travel. And even then, the outbound, I believe in the morning is 41. It's not even 55. So it's less than one per, one a minute coming out for that hour, for the peak hour. And these are all typical traffic engineering analysis that have been used on for years in every jurisdiction and this city.
Ms. Rosenko, please stay on the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The potential for lower values, um, that's speculative. Usually when new product comes in, the per square foot is higher. And, uh, just what a realtor thinks, I don't understand why they would think that. And the person testifying did not state that. As to the drainage issue, again, that has to be reviewed by your staff. Flooding can't be an issue. You can't build if you're going to impact others. Again, the reason for the change is we have inconsistent and we cannot build here without bringing water and sewer. And I want to see what else we missed. I'd point you again to your own comp plan policy that talks about the missing middle, HG, HSG dash 1.1B. And this is the missing middle. This is the first time this code has been asked for, to my knowledge. And it is to complete infill as, as suggested by your code of filling in the gaps. This was, uh, these were different slides as well, but I believe Mr., um, Taylor supplied that information and the traffic study does too. The traffic study is dated October 13th of 2025. With that, we would ask that you change the comprehensive plan to medium-density residential. We've provided you all the information for the rezoning too, so you understand the reasons we're asking for it. And with that, we can answer any further questions.
Counselor, any questions? Councilman Johnson? All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, ma'am, stand fast.
I just have one.
I already closed the public hearing.
There was a.
Ma'am, I, I asked for everyone to speak.
There was a, a mention of not being able to sell the property. What zoning was it when the property was purchased? Was it the same as it is now? That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, uh, deny the ordinance, keep the zoning the same.
Second.
Right now, carry on. Madam, madam attorney?
Yes, I, I noticed we said zoning.
The land use. Well, it's a land use.
Yeah, sorry, land use.
Thank you.
Did you want to restate your motion, sir?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to keep the land use what it is.
Okay, so to deny the change.
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion by Councilman Langvin, second by Councilman Hammer. Discussion, gentlemen? Councilman Hammer?
I had a question for city manager.
There's a motion now.
Yeah, yep. So I just want to give my, make sure I'm making my answer correctly with my question.
What's your question?
Do we have a study going on for the San Felipe intersections? Because they are so backed up. Aren't we spending taxpayer-funded money to assess and design these intersections?
F dot.
F dot is as well.
Yes.
Okay, so we're saying 833 more cars is not going to affect something that's already out of compliance?
We did not say that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, is that what's?
You have to ask the applicant. We're not saying that, it's staff.
It's too late to ask the applicant.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm just trying to put it in my head. I, I'm not, I'm not going to approve this. I'm not going to be for this. I, I think it's bad for the neighborhood. When I ran for my, for this seat, I ran on the fact that we don't need to have a development pour up. pour out, out onto a residential road. 833 cars on a road is, is, on a residential road where kids ride bikes and go out and basketball hoops in the road. That's, that's a lot. That is a lot. I, I can't, I can't be in support of this, I'm sorry.
So the motion is to deny. Any additional comments?
Yeah, mayor, just, just a question for the city attorney, because you know, this is a quasi judicial hearing.
No, this is, this is.
Oh, this was not, but.
No, this is land use.
All right, no problem. And I don't, I don't have a question then for the city attorney.
That would be item five.
Yeah, that's correct.
Councilman Johnson, any comments? Mayor. Okay, so I'll, I'll start with, I, I really believe the, the land use is spot on. I wouldn't mind having a, a church in that area. You could have different other uses, but the land use I think is spot on, so I'll be supporting the, the motion to deny. I'll, I'm calling the call question. All in favor of the denial, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Denial passes five zero, so we're not going to item five, we're going to item number six. Oh, before we go to item number six, I think I'd like to take a five-minute. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Before I went on to find a recess, I did say we were picking up item six, but there's no need for five and six. We're now on regular public hearings, item number seven. Madam Smith.
Ordinance 2025-49, an ordinance of the city of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 99, Maintenance of Abandoned Foreclosing Residential Properties by Modifying Language Related to the Foreclosing Residential Properties, Providing for the Repeal of Ordinances or Parsive Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for Inclusion in the City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, Providing for Severability Clause, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing and defer to Mr. Morton.
Thank you, our mayor, city council. This is the final reading of the item, and we did confirm that the fee has already been adjusted as requested to the $300 to the bank, with no further action required by council to accomplish that.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, staff, of staff, council? Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item, for or against it? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-49.
I'll second this one. Motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion, deputy mayor?
No, thank you, mayor.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. We're now going to the number, uh, number four on the consent agenda. Did you want to share something, Councilman Hammer?
Yes, um, there are some items on here. There are some items on here. I work for International Trucks, and there are some international trucks listed on here. So I'm going to be recusing myself because that is a business that I work for.
Aye, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your integrity, sir. Counsel, any questions, or Mr. Morton?
So thi, this is item number four on, on the consent agenda.
On the consent.
On the consent, right.
Councilman, Councilman Hammer pulled it because he, he apparently works for one of the, uh, one of the projects.
Yeah, I was going to pull it, but Councilman Hammer pulled it before I did. So I could, so could we just have the Public Works Director come up, Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin Brinkley, Public Works.
Thank you. And Kevin, obviously, I know you're, you're, you weren't, you weren't here for, uh, years ago when some of this money was appropriated, and so you're, you're kind of up here in the spot, but could you just explain why we're, we're having to reappropriate funds from, from vehicles from, uh, as far back in the past as we are, and we still haven't bought those vehicles yet?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. This is a formality that is coming before council for the first time, so it, it does raise a lot of questions and, and what is this? So every year, we place a, a great number of orders for vehicles. We have, uh, over 1,100, uh, units, vehicles and equipment in our fleet, so that is continuously turning over, um, as is with anything that has to be manufactured. You manufacture the chassis and for our specialized vehicles and equipment, then you end up putting some kind of a dump body or a work body or something like that on it. So multiple vendors, then probably a third vendor for the lighting and outfit and stuff like that. Um, so it, it is a longer timeline to manufacture these items. Traditionally, what had happened in, in Palm Bay was if we came to the end of the fiscal year and had not been delivered that piece of equipment yet, naturally the, uh, purchase order would roll over into the following year, and it was, it was just a continuation. Now we are closing those work orders to reopen or, um, and, and we need to come before council to ask for that. So this isn't a, an out of the ordinary occurrence, um, but it is something that's very new for you guys and it would be the first time that you're seeing it. Just for some kind of background, um, we have received 132 assets, uh, that we ordered from fiscal year 24 and 25. Those are, the, the trucks that you see here are all either 24 or 25 orders, so, um, it's not anything from 23 or anything like that. We've received all those assets. So usually, within a year, you're going to get it unless it's a really specialized piece of, a lot of times golf course equipment, it may take two or three years, something like that.
Awesome. Yeah, just, just want to clarify for the, for the public, because we're obviously trying to, trying to be, uh, more precise with our dollars and how we're spending them and be transparent, but it's good to know that you have a strategy and that that's the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Councilman Langivan.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, what'd you say, Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Passes, passes four zero. Okay, uh, Councilman Hammer, you, you're welcome to come join us again. We're now on new business, item number five.
Thank you, our mayor, city council. This item is coming back to you tonight, hopefully for a decision. If you recall, it was tabled, uh, or continued, and I don't remember the actual technical process, but it was given an opportunity for anyone to challenge, in essence, the RFA or to, uh, appeal the process. That is not going to occur, and so we're back on tonight representing this item as a request to formally give us direction on whether to issue an RFA. We've given you the same two paths. There's a, a curtailed process that's more expeditious, um, likely to draw, you know, more local applicants. There is a second option for a revamped process, which would, uh, run several months and, you know, be a complete redo of, of the process, complete, complete reexamination, um, you know, go, going through the issue. Due to the monetary value of the lease, and again, and some unbudgeted unrealized maintenance, we have asked council to give us some direction on questions, um, to keep us in parity with some other leases. For example, providing for deductibles for the tenant for repairs of mechanical, electrical or HVAC, HVAC system. We give you some examples of what we're doing in other leases, and we would negotiate that after an RFA and bring those terms back, um, to council, either as disclosed here in the staff report, or if you have additional or different guidance or direction, we'd be happy to listen to that. We do have Stafford answer any questions, if there are any, but I think we've presented this item to you before.
Thank you. Any speaker cards, deputy mayor?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on the topic of the Evan Center this evening. The Evan Center holds a special place in my heart. Many people don't know, but I was the very first person to be hired when the Evan Center originally opened. The first person to ever get a paycheck that said the Evan Center on it, and I was a proud member of the Northeast Palm Bay Poudriscoll Subdivision Community. So it's important to me that this building remains in possession of the community and run by the community. And because of that, Little Growers is seeking the opportunity to submit a proposal for, for the Evan Center. We have a great vision for the Evan Center and a wide range of support to help us execute that vision, which includes, as you know from our last meeting about this, the Florida Institute of Technology, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Stetson University, and community-based organizations that we have supported through our $656,000 grant that we've recently received from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. We are in the process of also executing a grant that we've received from the integrate, from the pro, the IRL NEP, the Indian River Lagoon National Estuaries Program, where we will be developing an aquaculture system that will not only grow fish and food for the community, but about 10% of what's grown in that system will be used to restore the Indian River Lagoon. Our vision for this space is not just to restore it to its original purpose, which is food security for the community, a community that is still very much food insecure, and, um, most of the community members are lacking transportation to even get to the nearest Walmart, which is less than a mile away. So our goal is to introduce food back into this space as an opportunity to feed the community, but to do so with workforce development in mind through training in our aquaculture system that is going to be produced and certified by the Florida Institute of Technology. But we have an alternative goal for that space. We want to develop a climate resilience center. The nearest space that you can go to during a hurricane to get support from FEMA and resources and other things like that is all the way in Cocoa. And for the residents of Palm Bay, that's just not the best option. If we are afforded the opportunity to apply for the Evan Center, we envision a space that provides cooling during hurricanes and storms, when community members don't have power, fresh hot food for the community, and so much more, education, workforce development, and we have the capacity and the support to accomplish that. I also want to invite you to our upcoming event.
Thank you.
If I may share.
Thank you. I'll pass the sound. Any other speakers, deputy mayor?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I need a motion, and I need to know which option, uh, council wants to go with. Option one, the expedited, or option number two?
I'll make a motion, uh, for option number one.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, I'll. Okay, I'll, Councilman Johnson, you're second. Deputy Mayor Jaffe, you made the motion?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. Any comments, Councilman Johnson?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? Passes five zero. We're now on item number six. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
New business number six.
New business number six?
Yes.
I, uh, bringing forth an ordinance, I, I mentioned, uh, several meetings ago, that I was gonna be bringing forth an ordinance for council consideration, amending council policies and procedures by limiting speakers during the non-agenda public comment speakers to city citizens being owner of property or businesses within the city, or those which receive utility services from the city concerning those utility services. Again, this provision would only apply to those speaking under the public comment section of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, council? Seeing none, Deputy Mayor, speaker cards?
Uh, Santa Wright? Butcher in?
Excuse me. Butcher ran two nineteen Trenton Avenue. Bill said that he didn't miss the meeting, he stood outside as long as he could and he went home.
Oh.
Don't call him not here. He's watching. Uh, Butcher ran two nineteen-
So he saw the proclamation for native?
No, he, he was outside when that happened.
Okay.
Okay. Two nineteen Trenton Avenue. By not allowing our neighbors, neighborhoods to come in and speak, you're going to kind of curb their right to speak to us about how it's going to affect their community, what we do here, and vice versa. I don't think there's any other city that says, if you live in, if you don't live in this city, you can't come and speak to us about it. I just think it's a, a, a bad way to go. Um, I think we should have all avenues of communications open. Because you never know what that other person may say that would help our city out. And if you shut them, shut the door on them, you'll never hear them. Now, a lot of them come up here and bitch and complain about nothing, but I would say that they need to stay on subject when they get up here. That's all I got for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, I do have a question. Two, are we gonna go back up?
To one?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Next speaker?
That concludes, cards, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consideration of amending these council policies and procedures related to public comments.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landyman. Any discussion?
Discussion, thank you, uh, Mr. Oren for your, for your statement. If we didn't have cell phones or email addresses, I would, I would say, I would understand your argument. You know, at the end of the day, we are a legislative body for the citizens of Palm Bay. We have no authority or decision-making ability for anybody that comes here outside of the city limits asking us to act on their statements. Even up until tonight, there was almost a dozen people that didn't live in Palm Bay speaking, asking us to take action against staff and against council members. We have an abundance of staff sitting here that we're paying to be here, and these people are coming from outside our city limits, not paying taxes, yet costing our city money. Got a recent report from the city manager that we have a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand residents. That's a lot for five people to serve. I don't have the capacity to serve anybody outside the city of Palm Bay. I was elected to serve the residents of Palm Bay. I think this is a good policy. I think it's a common sense policy. And, uh, you know, with that, I'll close and allow the rest of council to, to comment.
Councilman Landyman?
No comment.
Uh, Councilman Johnson?
I'm good, Mayor. I'm supporting.
Councilman Hammer?
I understand it, and I agree with it. But I think we're, I think since we, even since we've taken council here, we have had a lot of times where the outside is affected. And sometimes I like to hear that. And I am, I'm a voice for the people, and I haven't heard anybody tell me that they're in approval of it. So whether, me myself, I feel like this is the right thing to do. But I wasn't put in here to speak for how I feel only. So I am going to be against it tonight.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm right along with you, Councilman Hammer, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Although I validate what you're trying to do, um, in, in efficiency, we're, we're not only the largest city in this county, we're also regionally impacted by a national estuary. Right? And I, I seriously mean that. There's a National Estuary Caucus federally that handles waterways such as our Turkey Creek and our Indian River Lagoon. And, and to kind of like shorten that speech process of, okay, you're not a Palm Bayer, um, you shouldn't speak on those items and address this council. Um, so I've seen, and I've seen, I've been here long enough where we had many citizens within the city come and speak regarding our estuary, regarding the impacts that we have on surrounding our communities. And I've also seen it where their comments were actually put in place to save our lagoon and our Turkey Creek. Uh, and I, I remember those action items vividly. The second thing is, how are you gonna police that? Anybody could put a BTR and say, hey, um, I, I'm a Palm Bayer, I, I have a business, yet, you know, and I use any address. So how are you gonna enforce that? So that, I don't, I get where you're going with that, but I, I don't support it. Um, so with that being said, I'll, I'll call the question. Uh, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landyman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, all opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, I'd like a roll call on that, please.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hammer?
Nay.
Councilman Landyman?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Uh, nay. Motion passes three to two. We are now on item number seven. Mrs. Jones?
I apologize, Mayor. Um, uh, staff is requesting to reschedule the first and second meetings of January due to the New Year's holiday. We are suggesting the, uh, second and fourth Thursdays of January eighth and January twenty-second.
Why not do that Tuesday after? Instead of flipping it so far in advance? Why not do Tuesday and then, uh, do the third Thursday, kind of like just back-to-back?
Because we have to allow proper time to advertise in between the meetings.
So what about Tuesday and then the fourth Friday? Because we're gonna still have back-to-back the fourth Thursday of the month and the first Thursday of, of February, aren't we? Aren't we gonna have the same back-to-back issue? And yet, we could have a longer space, uh, if, because we're talking about the first falls on a Thursday, why not have it that Tuesday?
So you're saying the eighth and the twentieth?
Yes, ma'am.
That's fine.
That's my suggestion. I don't know what council feels. I got a thumbs up by Councilman Landyman.
Thursday the eighth and Tuesday the twentieth?
Tuesday the twentieth. Okay. Councilman Johnson, you go with that?
Thursday eighth?
Tu- Tuesday the eighth, she said, right? Thursday the eighth and Tuesday the twentieth.
Yes, I'm good with both.
Okay, so do you need that in a motion, ma'am?
Just curious, like, why not the twenty-second, though? Thursday and Thursday?
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll, I'll go with that.
Okay, so both Thursdays?
I'll go with that, that's good. I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
But it's just, she said back-to-back wouldn't work, but-
They're not.
No, what, what eighth did you suggest?
Eighth and twenty-second?
Yes, that, that was proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, eighth and twenty-second, okay. So Thursday, the tw- the eighth and Thursday the twenty-second, correct?
Correct.
I need a motion.
It's removed.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by, who? Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we are now on new business item number one. Madam Smith, I, uh, you present this item, ma'am.
Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-one. A resolution of the City of Palm Bay, Rivara County, Florida, censuring Councilman Chandler Landyman for conduct unbecoming of an elected member of the city council and for improperly using the City of Palm Bay letterhead, providing for an effective date. This is in follow-up from our last meeting in which council voted to censure Councilman Landyman. Censure must be brought through resolution, so this is the resolution that has been brought to conform with council's, um, vote. I do want to do something that's a little out of the ordinary for me. I tend not to do a deep dive into case law in council meetings, but there is one case in particular. The Houston Community College System versus Wilson that I do want to be able to talk about, because I know that there has been a lot of discussion about the city's ability to censure a public official and what we can do and whether it violates the First Amendment. And there have been various opinions, there have been people citing lower cases that are inapplicable, but what I want to do is cite from the case from the United States Supreme Court that outlines what our ability to do this is and how it comes about. So just quickly to tell you a little bit about how this case arose. David Wilson was elected to the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System. The board imposed a verbal censure, and they made him ineligible for board officer positions. He then sued by saying that the verbal censure plus the penalties violated his First Amendment rights. The First Amendment prohibits laws that abridge the freedom of speech. So when evaluating this, United States Supreme Court first looked to the American legal tradition. And when evaluating the American legal tradition, the court said, elected bodies in this country have long exercised the power of censure of their members. And it goes back to colonial times in which assembly, these censured their members. They also brought up some earlier examples. One of the earlier examples, eighteen thirty-two, one of the members of the House was censured for insulting the speaker. And of course, during the Civil War, Congress censured several members for expressing support for the Confederacy. So there is an American tradition for censoring members based upon their speech. And it went on to detail that Congress has censured members not only for objectional speech directed at fellow members, but also comments made to the media and conduct for speech that damages the nation. And likewise, censures have been proven common for state and local level. So in analyzing these, particularly in cases in which there is no suspension or expulsion of a member, which is the case here, council does not have the ability to suspend or expel a member, and this resolution doesn't do that. When you're, as far as we've been threatened for a lawsuit, when you're gonna approve a First Amendment retaliation claim, the court now says that you have to approve an adverse action without, in its suspension or expulsion. What you're looking at is, would the conduct chill a person of ordinary firmness? Well, the court said, elected representatives are expected to show their a degree of criticism about their public service from their constituents and their peers, and to continue exercising their free speech rights when that criticism comes. So if you do something, you're criticized by your peers, you're criticized by the public, and then they want to express disapproval, you can't say that chills your free speech rights. That's what you sign up for when you're an elected official. Moreover, the court says, you have a free spe- right to free speech, but you can't use that to shield the group, because when it, the body enacts a censure, what that is, is speech. It is speech by the elected body. So just as Mr. Landyman has a right to free speech, the body has a right to free speech, and its ability to speak cannot be quelled by his. So ultimately, what the court said is, if the censure, even if it is the verbal plus an act, if it is not stopping you from fundamentally doing your job as an elected official, it is permissible. And so what we have to look at is, what is fundamental to your job and what is it that we are not permitting? And I think key to that is looking at, what does a censure actually provide? There are three items. It says, prior to placing an item on the agenda for council consideration, Councilmember Landyman must seek and receive the consensus of a majority of city council. Councilmember Landyman shall not speak during the committee council reports portion of the meeting, accept a request to consensus of a majority of city council to place an item on a future agenda, and Councilmember Landyman is immediately removed and not eligible for future appointments to any City of Palm Bay boards or committees. Fundamental to any elected official is the ability to vote. This does not restrict his ability to vote. It doesn't even restrict his ability to advocate for an ordinance or some item to be on the agenda. Surely, if there's not a consensus of members of the council, the item wouldn't pass anyway. It doesn't fundamentally stop him from doing anything. And you could look at what Palm Bay does, but if you look broader, because Palm Bay, we do things a little different here sometimes. A lot of places do not allow council members to place items on the agenda unless there's a consensus with, essentially, it's a deal between council and the city manager in the sense that it is not efficient to have staff do the work to bring forth an item that might not pass. So it's not fundamental that you're able to put an item on the agenda without consensus. It is not fundamental to be able to speak under committee council reports, particularly when you're not on a committee, because that's one of the items that was removed, and that's also one of the items that the court found was not a problem. Because it's not fundamental for you to be able to represent your constituency for you to be on a committee. You don't have to be on a committee. There is nothing that goes fundamentally to what it is to be an elected official. So to those extent, council can proceed as it desires. Certainly, council is free to do more, do less, but there is nothing in here in which violates the First Amendment rights, particularly as announced by the United States Supreme Court. And all courts must actually follow the United States Supreme Court, whether they agree or disagree. They must follow the binding precedent of the Supreme Court. And so that concludes my, uh, comments, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy Mayor, any common cards?
Debra?
Brockaloni?
Debbie Brockaloni, eighteen twenty-one Agora Circle. Whether we censure him or not, I, we're going to have a problem, and I'll tell you why. Because since the last meeting, he more has begun, and a few other things that I don't feel like getting into. I am neither a Democrat or a Republican. We need to have a way to stop the rhetoric. Period. Because so long as he's allowed to post the negativity, we're always gonna have an issue. And that's not fair to anybody that is here. What can we do to curb it? Because I, for one, don't feel like taking the bus up here every time he makes a, a statement, because he is supposed to represent- because he is supposed to represent every one of us. Doesn't matter if you're black, white, Muslim, Jew, atheist, I, that is your job. Whether his personal, you are not supposed, Mr. Hammer did not put his personal beliefs before his job. So what do we do? Because we know he's not going to stop. How do we handle it? That's my question. Whether the governor suspends him or not, whether we censure him or not, we're still going to have the fundamental problem of the division in this city and it's a shame. Like I stated before, I am here long enough, my kids, I've put them through the school system here. Hate has never been this bad, ever. I grew up at the tail end of the racial riots. I watched a ten-year-old get the snot knocked out of him for the color of his skin. I've been called, my Christianity has been called into question because of the color of my skin. When do we, as the adults in the room, stop? And it's not only here, it's across the board. And I for one, am tired of it. I lived through a hate period. I lived through a, a, a period where women were told, oh, sweetie, go home. You're, you should be home making babies and, and doing the kitchen. I've had enough. I'm sixty years old. I have lived through some stuff that I, nobody here has. Some of you have lived through stuff that nobody should have. But it's time for us, put the political party BS on the side and start taking care of the people that you were elected to take care of.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Laura Harris.
Good evening, uh, community, good evening, council and members. My name's Laura Hirsch Harris. I live at one, at two twenty-seven Muirfield Way, Palm Bay, Florida. I'm just going to read what I wrote. My ancestors immigrated from Russia and Poland and Czechoslovakia in the eighteen hundreds, escaping pogroms and antisemitism in Europe. They saw a better life here. My mother's family did as well, um, for similar reasons. The reason I'm speaking here today is because I'm appalled at the continued racism against citizens of Palm Bay and people on the pathway to citizenship, looking for a better life for themselves and their families. I'm appalled to see Mr. Langivan, a person in leadership, targeting people who do not fit the worldview that he has. It's dangerous trend in the United States and our community. Palm Bay Councilmember Langivan has been abusing, in my opinion, has been abusing his position of power and influence to spread ignorance. I'd like to see that changed. He's made repeated racist comments against Muslims, Indian Americans and evil left-wing Democrats. I'm a Democrat. I don't think I'm evil. I don't really think that fits. You can't, I, I don't think it's good to lump people together and generalize them and make blanket statements. It's dangerous and ignorant behavior, especially in leadership. Uh, but what really strikes me, um, is that not only are you meant to be a, is a council member meant to serve all citizens of Palm Bay and you cost, and he cost taxpayers twenty-five thousand dollars for the unauthorized, um, rally and wore City of Palm Bay shirt. It wasn't, he wasn't acting as a private citizen. The, what really strikes me and concerns me is his talk about his friend, Robert Rundo, who he met last year, um, heard his story and now they're friends. And he's one of the nicest guys he's ever met in a quote. Wrote a letter to Herodopolis on the official Palm Bay letterhead without the council's notice to pardon him. I looked at some research, I never heard of him. Robert Rundo is a white, is a neo-Nazi white supremacy leader and founder of Rise Above Movement, a member of active clubs, which is a decentralized network of neo-Nazi white supremacist extremist groups that use combat sports and fitness to recruit, radicalize and train members for racist violence. Why is this important? Because this show, this, because Langivan is showing me who and what he supports, not only through his words and actions, also through the support of this white nationalist neo-Nazi group, led by his friend, Robert Rundo. This affiliation to me is scary and it feels to me like an abusive position. And I believe this type of rhetoric, word and action have no place in the City of Palm Bay, the state of Florida, the nation or the world. And I'd like to see, um, him removed or censored. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Alfie Agar.
Good night, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I'm Alfie Agar, sixteen eighty Main Street, northeast Palm Bay. I'm very curious about this situation. I don't know what decision, um, our governor will be having. But there's a lot of changes want to be done in our city. Based on this, even our city charter need to be, you know, revised. I run for office a few times myself. And I got the impression, all the paperwork stated, an NPA office. We're all running for an NPA office in our council. And it seems like we heading in a different direction where politics and party is misleading us in a sense where now we are looking towards a political violence in our City of Palm Bay. I never even heard of this or thought of this when I came here thirty years ago. But there is a lot of thing can be done. Our candidate, I hear a lot of rumor about Councilman Channelling was, he had applied for a candidacy at the time he wasn't a resident in our city. There is so much things outside of what he said. Using the funds without authorization, using the city logo without, there's a lot of thing, not just what he says about Indians or Muslims, but there's a lot of other things that is, that is wrong and outside of its performance that could be used against him also. I think Councilman Langivan should be removed by even a reverse, review, a reverse election where the citizen votes him in, they can vote him out. So somehow or some way, I'm looking forward for our council or attorney to look in any, any way possible that Mr. Langivan can be removed from office. At this time, we are looking at a political violence in our City of Palm Bay. And I am not, I am not accepting that. So I think we need to put out all the effort we can to make sure it's concluded in that way. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Parker Allen. Parker Allen. Craig Dilligish. Connor. Yancy.
Hello, City Council. I've returned once again, but this time not to speak against flock cameras. This time I've returned to speak out against Chandler Langivan. Yes, I do, would like to say you do have the First Amendment right to say whatever you desire. But you do not, those words can also be followed by the consequences of what you stated. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the cards, ma'am.
Okay. All right, council, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-one. I'll remove my, uh, motion. Thank you. Ross Camarillo.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ross Camarillo. I live at two oh two Surturso Avenue, Northeast. As to Mr. Langivan, the council member, that I may not be one hundred percent in part of all his beliefs and exactly-
Get closer to the mic, sir.
All right, thank you. I may not be one hundred percent in all his beliefs and everything that he has fully with his support of the, the pardoning, but in general, the path of censure of Mr. Langivan during this tumultuous time is a precedence in this growing city that should not be taken. Because even what we have gone through in the past with the Civil War, which was fought, we are very much on the precipice of that at this time because political is exactly what is on the table and being brought about throughout our entire city and the country. Consent of the governed has been trampled by, would you, by all government at this point for the citizens. And the attempt to censor him is just another example of that, of disregarding our rights and our votes to put him there as a figurehead for us, to put forth items for us as citizens. And on top of that, being in this country is something we have to protect. Assimilation is part of that protection to make this city and this country as great as it is. We all have stories where we come from migrants in some fashion of that sort. But in general, if we don't protect what is America and by doing things that American citizens want, we are not going to have America that we've all been wanting to live in and dream of. So if we go through and censure and disregard the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, what point do we have here to defend any further? Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-one.
I'll second. Deputy Mayor?
You know, ma'am, I don't, there's absolutely no pleasure in making this, this motion for this resolution. I'll be completely frank with you. I am so tired of talking about this and hearing about this and the distraction it's causing of just the daily function and the responsibility of us to handle the day-to-day city business. I don't think this is going to solve anything, but, um, it's a step in the right process. And that's why I support it. I just would ask Councilman Langivan, change your course, man, you know? We're city council. We're not going to affect immigration laws on a national level. There's things that you can say, I think, that could help you get elevated to a position of higher power that, you know, if you have that vision one day, but I think you're hurting your chances for that now. You know, so I have nothing else to say, ma'am. I'm just, I'm completely gassed with this whole thing.
And, and I think not only is everyone on this dais gassed, but I think the entire community's gassed. Um, I think we're all overwhelmed by everything and I, and I, since I seconded the motion, I, I just wanted to reiterate. We have attempted to apply grace, love, love you through this process as well, Councilman Langivan. But I, I want to just touch a little bit on, on what this resolution is. The comments of there's not a single Indian that cares about the United States of America. As someone that served in the military, as you are a veteran and I'm grateful for your service, this nation was founded on immigrants, Irish Americans, Italian Americans, Puerto Rican Americans. That's an oxymoron because Puerto Ricans are born as Americans. But I, I just wanted to throw that out there, um, in light of we are all part of the very fabric of the flag, our banner, the United States of America. We're woven into that fabric and to isolate individuals that are also woven into that fabric is conduct unbecoming. And as you know, if you were to say something like this on active duty, you'd be standing on the carpet. And so this is our way of standing on the carpet. I want to read a whereas that really touches the essence of what we're doing. And I agree with Deputy Mayor. It, it has come to a point where we, we have to do this. The city council finds that the Councilmember Langivan's remarks conduct, violate Chapter Eight Code of Ethics for Public Officials, specifically eight-two dash C, professional and personal conduct. Officials must act above reproach and refrain from abusive conduct, personal attacks or verbal assaults against council members, staff or the public. Performance of duties, officials must remain loyal to the political objectives expressed by the electorate and their programs. The electorate are the citizens of the, of this great city. Avoidance of improper action. Officials must avoid actions that impede efficiency, compromise impartiality, impartiality or reduce public confidence. And it goes on. But as I conclude, officials shall support a constructive and safe workplace for our city employees, our citizens and businesses. This censure is an expression of an official disapproval of your comments. And as I said before, we're all part of the fabric of this great nation. It is not logical to say that every single Indian, that, there's no logic in that. So that is why I support, uh, this motion. It is, we're in a place that we have to because your conduct is unbecoming an elected official of the City of Palm Bay and you are improperly using or use the City of Palm Bay letterhead. So thus, I second the motion. Councilman Hammer?
Yeah, I wrote something, but I'm not going to use it. One thing, when I first started, I was so excited to be on this council. There was five people up here with five different viewpoints. And I was so looking forward to the dialect we can have back and forth. I got to campaign and go to events and hear everything that Councilman Jaffe, Councilman Langivan had to say at all these events. I was so excited to be part of this. I knew we were going to bring change. And I will tell you this right now. The very first meeting, Mr. Langivan brought something to the table that I think is one of the smartest things we've done as a city is bring our new city manager in. That is something that is arguably the turning point to this city. And, and you can agree or not agree, but I think it's one of the most important things that we've done. Outside of that, a censure is basically a majority of us are in strong disapproval of something somebody said or did. And I'm going to back that. I am, I am behind that one hundred percent. But I am also going to say it is the Commission on Ethics's job to do anything else past that. I think we've spent enough time and energy on this. I think we should just do the censure and move on. We got roads to worry about, we got flooding to worry about. I mean, we have businesses to bring in here. Let's put this behind us. Let's just do the censure and move on. I think this other stuff, I think him, him on the dais is a completely different person than him in the, on Twitter and on X or whatever it is. I think it's two different people. I think sitting next to me, he has brought so much to this table. Whether I do not agree with what he said outside, I think he's, he's brought a strength to this council that I think is part of our team. And to make him, to give him permission to talk, I can't agree with that. And I'm not going to agree with it tonight. I will agree with just the censure. And if it comes down to it, then I will stand there. I do think some of the actions and some of the words that were done are something that we need to make a stance that we're in strong disapproval of it. But I don't think we should take anything away from him. I think we should censure him and let the people that are in charge of doing these other things, do that. And we should move on and start worrying about fixing some flooding. Thank you.
Well, Councilman Hammer, I'm, I'm going to just highlight a little bit of what you said. When it comes to businesses, how many businesses- When it comes to businesses, how many businesses don't wanna look at us because of those comments? So it does affect as a whole. And and I did read some of those, but right now I have a motion for, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to be patient and wait, um, but I do want to caution council on becoming too wordy regarding this. As we know, October thirteenth, um, litigation was filed. So I am personally requesting that we as the council, along with our legal, um, with our city attorney, have a a shade meeting next week, being that litigation has been filed and looking to move forward with it. So I do feel that there should be a closed shade meeting, which everything from that meeting will become public record in due time, just like our executive sessions. But I would love to request a shade meeting immediately within the next week.
I'd like to ask the city attorney her thoughts.
We haven't, uh, we haven't actually been served any type of litigation. There's been a threat of litigation essentially preempting um council's um vote, that if this vote were to occur, that there would be litigation filed thereafter. I would suggest, and certainly we wouldn't be able to really have a council, uh, an executive session. I think we need to first let them file whatever they're going to file. Once they file it, I'll bring for earth. I'll come back. I'll announce at a council meeting that we're, and I'm seeking your advice, and we can then schedule the executive session. But right now we don't have. I think it's premature for me to have, try to have an executive session on what I think a complaint may be, rather than to seek your advice on what is actually filed, if it's filed.
And and you did commence this discussion with uh case law.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted, I'm not sure if Councilman Johnson had heard that. Right now?
Yes, I'm 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 listening, Mayor. I just have strong concerns in regards to um a lawsuit against the city. But there'll still be communication with the representative who's representing the city and the said person who's suing the city. Um, so I was hoping to have discussion um as a body because we have to have the city's best interest, whether it's against whoever. But we have to have the city's best interest always at heart. So that's that's where my heart is, Mayor. That's where I brought this up. Um, and that's why I stand with it.
Copy that. And so to that question, can you defend this census, ma'am?
This is the action council uh wishes to take. I do believe that this action is consistent with the uh law and the Supreme Court's holding.
Thank you. So hearing that, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed it by I didn't hear. Carry on, Councilman Landevan.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So first off, I'd like to thank the council for prolonging this episode for over three weeks now. It has motivated hundreds of Palm Bay residents I did not know before to reach out to me, to thank me for fighting for them. Entire churches have reached out to me in support, and multiple members of some of your own congregations, at least two of you, um, have reached out to in support. Most of my immediate neighbors have knocked on my door to support me. A random dad at a kid's football practice pulled me aside to thank me. And a random car stopped in the middle of the road as I was jogging last week and yelled, "Thank you. You were right." I've even received calls. You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip that one. That's okay. But why are so many people fired up and invigorated over this topic? For the same reason that the city overwhelmingly voted for Donald Trump the same day that they voted for me. The number one issue of everyday Americans is immigration and border security. But it's not just illegal immigration. Legal immigration is being exploited at record numbers, and this has direct impacts on our city as much as anywhere else in the country. It has impacts on our economy. It has impacts on our jobs, and it has impacts on our rapid growth. Our infrastructure is de- is decades old. Our city is overcrowded and growing at an unsustainable rate, and housing prices are absurd. Immigration impacts every one of those items. It adds strain on our first responders when we have incidents like the one earlier this year, when an immigrant truck driver killed two surveyors on I ninety-five in Palm Bay. In my own family, we have been in two accidents that we were not at fault. Both individuals who were hit were immigrants. One was illegal and one was a non-US citizen that didn't speak English. This now drives up insurance costs. This episode has also given me the opportunity to speak with a dozen Palm Bay constituents who work in the IT field. A hundred percent of them said that they have either lost a job to an H one B or they walk on eggshells in fear that they are next. I have also had conversations with multiple Palm Bay constituents who moved to Palm Bay from the Dallas-Fort Worth area because the influx of migration has been so hard and fast that it has decimated the culture and made Americans feel like second-class citizens. Now, I've heard this council say many times that we represent everybody. If that is true, do these people not deserve representation as well? This episode has also allowed me to develop a relationship with many great Hindu Americans across the entire state of Florida. We have daily dialogue, and I have driven as far as Fort Lauderdale to have dinner and discuss policy them. I was there this Monday having dinner. We have plans moving forward to address many of these issues together, as well as to bridge gaps within our communities moving forward. I was able to drive this policy and bring unlikely groups of people to the table in my fashion, not through appeasement and wearing a foreign flag around my neck, but through steadfastness and dialogue. Now to address the actual accusations at hand. As we have advanced in technology and population, platforms like X have become the new public square. I not only have a constitutional right, but I personally believe I have a duty and an obligation to engage other elected officials, to have dialogue with my constituents, and to drive policy in the manner I deem best. I am an independently elected official that answers to my constituents, not to the other members of this board. You are free, of course, to disagree with what policy I pursue and in the manner in which I pursue it. You can even vehemently disagree. Our form of republican government allows us to engage in debate, even passionate debate. It allows a timeframe for the constituents to decide if I should stay in office for another four years. Our charter even describes what gross misconduct a member could perform to warrant removal from the board entirely. None of those are applicable in this case. If you notice, though, there is no section in the policy and procedure manual authorizing to enact punitive measures. Actually, there's nothing in the policy and procedure manual to talking about censured or punitive measures at all. Um, there's a reason for that. I am either an elected councilman or I am not. As soon as we start allowing councils to silence its members and take away their primary roles and responsibilities because we disagree with their speech or policy, we set a dangerous precedent that would allow any majority to silence any minority on any representative form of government, which I hope we all agree is both unconstitutional and un-American. Speaking of Americans, my posts never mention an American citizen. They were referring to those individuals who are in this country either illegally or exploiting exploiting a work visa and are not American citizens. America is not an economic zone, nor is it an idea that any one of the Earth's eight-point-two-five billion inhabitants can just wake up one day and decide to be an American. America is a sovereign nation with a people, history, and culture. And I respectfully disagree with my fellow councilmen that made the comment that we were on stolen land. My ancestors conquered this land. They tamed this land. They built this land. They defended this land through two-hundred-and-fifty years of war and strife. And through those experiences, America was created and will remain. The preamble of the United States Constitution that we swore our earth to end by stating and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, it does not say for the world at large. My comments, while abrasive, were in the pursuit of policy that puts Americans first and represents the silent majority of heritage Americans that elected myself and the President of the United States, expecting that someone would finally make them a priority. The second accusation, gentlemen, is in reference to my use of the city letterhead. You reference Chapter Eight, Section Two, Paragraph K, Subparagraph Two, which does start off by stating a public official may use the city's name, letterhead, logo, or seal only when it be perceived as representing the council uh or the body as a whole and only with the park incentive council. But it goes on to say, however, this provision will not prohibit individual council members from using city letterhead and resources to write personal congratulatory letters, letters of recommendation, references, endorsements, and such, which is a very vague term, may be written by council members on city letterhead. With my mistake, with a copy being provided to each council member. However, it doesn't give a timeline on that, and I think you all have a copy by now. So, gentlemen, I believe that the precedent that we're setting with the punitive actions, first off, I'm not against you censoring me tonight. If you vehemently disagree with me, you should a hundred percent censor me. I'm also not against being removed from any boards because that's a secondary role. It's not a primary obligation as a council member. So if you feel like I don't serve on the board of risk management or that I can't do that position anymore, then again, that's a secondary role. Go ahead and do what you need to do. However, um, limiting my speech in council, and I disagree with the city attorney on this because it's not committee reports. It's committee and council reports, and there's two paragraphs in our policies and procedures. One annotates committee reports and one annotates council reports, and it says councilmen may speak on whatever item they want. So our policies and procedures dictate that we may speak in council reports, but it does not dictate that there's anything we could do for you to remove that ability from what I'm doing. So beyond personal things, I think the precedent that it sets moving forward that other cities can use um is a bad precedent, and I don't want Palm Bay to be known for that. Now, there's another whereas um where it says Councilman Landevan's actions, um, the responses to his actions and his public remarks on October second. Um, you're right, I made that comment out of anger. Um, and having looked back on it and thought about it, I could have been angry tonight because the censure hadn't passed, and I could have put something ridiculous on the agenda. I chose not to. Out of respect, not only for the city, but out of respect for the staff and the city executive leadership. Um, and so to to hopefully build some sort of bridge here tonight, I'm retracting that statement. Um, and I apologize for that statement. Again, it was said out of anger. Um, so, gentlemen, what I would like to do here tonight is essentially say, yes, that statement was wrong. I'm gonna move forward focusing only on city actions and items. Um, I do not apologize for the X post. However, I will try to think about the city more often as I post on X. But the the letterhead is, quite frankly, I just read the second paragraph of the policy, and we have the right as councilmen to use the letterhead for various reasons without getting prior permission from the council. So what I would like to do, gentlemen, is say, let's do a censure. On the censure, remove me from the board. However, um, do not try to take away any of my primary roles as a councilman. Um, and we can put this to rest and we can move forward. Um, otherwise, a- as you know, the the lawsuit was not filed on the thirteenth, but it will be filed tomorrow if I'm not able to speak in council reports, because I think the precedent that we're setting is much deeper here than any individual councilman. So with with that, I yield and
Thank you. I've got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed it by Mayor Medina. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hammer?
Nay.
Councilman Landevan?
Nay.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. We're now on um council reports. Councilman Landevan, do you have anything you wanted to uh get consensus on?
Item two was about that.
Oh, as you were. Item two was continued, wasn't it?
Yeah, item two was pulled. Okay, I have a committee report from SAB.
Say again?
I have an SAB committee report.
Okay, that's on the yours.
He's out there.
Are you gonna, on the your reports? Okay. Okay, it's a committee report. Call, call him up.
Douglas Hook.
Doug?
This will be a Sustainability Advisory Board Committee Report.
Good evening, council. Doug Hope, St. Paul's Sustainability Advisory Board Member. Um, last meeting that I came to, uh, we obviously had a talk there at the end. Um, where Councilman Johnson presented, or wanted to pass along the feasibility study that was completed in twenty-twenty-three for Turkey Creek. Um, he did pass that along to me. Uh, while looking at that, I actually was able to identify something that I will be presenting to the Palm Bay Sustainability Advisory Board at our upcoming meeting. Um, that item was listed on the feasibility study as being a priority project, quote-unquote, and had, quote-unquote, "the largest immediate impact to the public." Um, and that is actually going to be at Bioswale, uh, Good Park. Um, I have actually begun reaching out to community partners um for potential volunteer opportunities. Um, and also I'm trying to explore funding opportunities for such a project. Uh, I've reached out to the Florida Native Plant Society and the Space Coast Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. I've also reached out to Orca and Bravard Zoo. I have not heard anything back from them. Uh, but we are looking for a large variety of ways um to include the uh community um and lower any potential financial impact that the city might have to take on to do this project. Um, our next meeting for the Sustainability Advisory Board will be Wednesday, October twenty-second at six P M. Um, well, like I said, I will be presenting this item. It is on the agenda for the board. We would love for the public to turn out and uh participate in some public comments and give us some ideas as for the direction of the Palm Bay Sustainability Advisory Board. Um, we'd love to hear feedback on the plan after I present it. And also, we wanted to bring up that October is Native Plant Month. Um, we were unable to unfortunately identify that in time to bring a resolution towards the city council. Um, that way that we could try to uh officially recognize uh Native Plant Month for the city of Palm Bay. But there are a couple of projects that are actually on the books already um that we are working towards that do help celebrate and promote native plants. Um, we have a thing at the monolith at the end of uh Port Malabar Road. Um, that is up for debate. Um, we are looking to utilize native plants during that planting, which would be a great way to celebrate. Also, we are looking at uh providing some feedback for the landscaping at the new building next door, Hall E, um, which is hopefully going to feature a lot of native plants as well. Lastly, uh, as part of the Sustainability Board, we are uh chartered to identify opportunities um for the community. Uh, one of those opportunities is actually gonna be coming up here soon. We have the Bravard Landscaping Tour, which is hosted by the Conrad Edina Chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, which is are taking place on Sunday, November ninth. I wanted to extend an invite to any members of the city staff um and any members of the city council uh to go to bravardlandscapetour.org. Uh, tickets are available on there. We would love to see you. I'm actually going to personally be volunteering at one of the stations, and I would love to see everybody and talk native plants with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start again. Councilman Landevan, did you have anything you wanted to seek consensus on?
Nay, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Hammer.
Okay, I want to thank Bill Wilkinson for forty years with our city. He spent forty years in public works. That's amazing. Thank you, Bill Wilkinson.
Yeah, Bill.
I also wanna thank George McCall. Um, he was, he was going down the road, and there is a lady, and she was walking with her child in a in a stroller, and it started raining. So he got out and he gave her a umbrella, and he followed her all the way home to make sure she made it home okay. So I wanna thank George McCall for that.
Yeah, way to go, George.
My next two things uh is I need, um, I don't need, I would like consent from you guys. First one, I would like to give the Sustainability Board permission to plant at the US One and Babcock uh Monolith. Um, if we can give them that median to plant, because right now it's just hamaflia grass sitting there, and I think they would uh enjoy and have have something nice to put there, if that's a
Is that a budget item?
I think they're gonna do it themselves.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
Okay, and secondly, um, I have been looking around at the other cities uh that have allowed this, and it's something I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring to our next agenda. But I would like to allow golf carts on streets under thirty-five miles an hour. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the communities like to take their kids to school with golf carts, and they've recently been told no. And I would like to And I would like to have a discussion, have, come up with some guidelines, people 16 and up, things like that, and see how you guys feel about it.
I'm not with it. I'm not with it. Me, I'm, I'm not with, with allowing golf carts. What, what, what do you say, uh, Councilman Johnson? I'm, I'm sorry, buddy.
Yeah, I got you.
I can go either way, Mayor.
Didn't hear what he said.
You? Oh, what, what do you say, Deputy Mayor?
I'm not open to the discussion.
Yeah. I, I'm not open.
So, Chandler?
I'd be open to discussion.
Thank you.
So Johnson, it's up to you. You, you, you got two, too. You're the tiebreaker whether we discuss this or not. Uh, Deputy Mayor and myself are on the, you know, this is, we don't need golf carts. Uh, this isn't Vieira, right? This is not Vieira. So that's where I'm at with that, but...
Well, right now, it's illegal to have a golf cart on the road. So even if you're going down the street, anything.
So what, what do you say, Deputy, or Councilman Johnson?
And, and that's where I'm good, because I remember with the whole, um, the chicken ornaments and everything. I was still kind of, I could go either way, but I'd rather just at least give Hammer, Councilman Hammer, the opportunity to look into it. If it comes before me and then I see it, I'm like, yeah, this isn't it. Then I'll, I'll shoot it down, but if not, and I like what I see, then I'm, I'm good with it. So I'm good with giving Councilman Hammer the uh, thumbs up.
Okay, thank you very much.
He's got, he's got consensus.
And it's just for discussion. It's, thank you.
Mayor, I think he's got an announcement he's got to read in council.
Oh, yes, there is something you got to read about you going to the conference.
Last page.
Reminder, Councilman Hammer will be attending.
I will be attending the Institute for Elected Municipal, or Municipal Officials Two in Orlando, October 24th and 25th.
Carry on.
That's all it says.
Are you going to Florida League of Cities?
Are you going to Florida League of Cities?
Yes, but I will be coming back.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm driving over there for the day, coming back for the council meeting.
That's what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see it on there.
Okay.
Don't see it on mine.
Right. Cool. They shortened it. Copy that. Deputy Mayor?
I will be...
Oh, wait, hold on. Councilman Johnson, as you were.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
I will be attending the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials Two in Orlando from October 24th to 25th. Um, two points of clarity. Number one, with the censorship and removal of boards, what is, what, what does that do with the Palm Bay Municipal Foundation Board?
It doesn't affect it.
Okay.
His status has been a council member, gives some rice to that board.
Perfect. And then, Councilman Landryman, you brought up allowing the, the Ethics Committee to, to do their job. What, what is your vision there? Because there actually isn't an ethics claim submitted. I mean, Hammer.
It was Councilman Hammer.
Yeah, Hammer.
I thought last, last meeting, we were writing a letter for these things. Didn't we, didn't we vote to write the letter out for this?
So we, we voted to agree to send, submit the letter to Senator Mayfield after several discussions with her and the General Counsel and Patricia with the, our city attorney with the General Counsel, the Ethics Committee. Things have changed in state law, and it's made it harder to submit ethics claims. And so council body as a whole can't submit. Individually, we all can, if we so desire. Just don't know if, you know, the city attorney, we can use the resources of the city attorney to, to submit that claim or, or what that looks like.
Madam Attorney?
Certainly, if there is anything any council member um, wants to pursue that's within the course of their responsibilities here, I have no issue with helping any council member.
So the letter that was approved, the ethics letter that was approved at last meeting?
There was no letter drafted.
Okay.
Homework was done after the fact.
Okay.
With Senator Mayfield's office and the General Counsel. Um, years past, they've gotten so many ethic complaints just from campaign candidates, just general public, that they've really tightened the, the requirements of what an ethics violation supplemental can look like. So it has to be firsthand knowledge.
So what you're saying is you want to bring back for us to draft it?
Well...
For our city attorney?
Yeah, I'm just asking that question if, you know, do we want to pursue? Do we want to continue to even pursue this? It's a long get. It's a long... And...
I mean, what, what's the actual ethics violation? That's what I want to know. Because, you know, you mentioned the, the $25,000. I, I have a text from me and the chief when I first planned this, that I said, "I'm not asking for anything. I just want you to know. I have my own personal security." Chief said, "Anytime there's an event, we have a policy." It's, it's using other events as well. So he made that decision. The city made that decision. I specifically said, "I'm good." So where's the, where's the ethics violation? That's what I want to know.
I guess, I guess maybe the best thing the city can do, and my, my recommendation will look like this, that, that we hire outside counsel that's ran through the city manager's office to conduct a full investigation to either absolve you of any...
So we're going to drag this out longer, we're going to pay more people to, to do this on something that's not an ethics violation? And you just said, "We're gassed. The city's tired of it. We want to move on." What, what are we doing? Can we just move on?
So I make a motion, gentlemen, to ask for your consensus that we hire outside counsel to be, uh, ran through the city manager's office to do an ethics investigation, and if there is one, they prepare the statements for us to submit to the state ethics board.
You going to second it? Okay, I got, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Councilman Hammer. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Mayor?
Councilman Johnson, yes.
Yes, I'll put the, um, I would like...
I, you're breaking up, brother. Can you clarify again? Hello?
Mayor?
Carry on.
Apology.
Councilman Johnson, are you there?
Oh, what I was saying, Mayor, I would, I would love to see how much we're spending on outside counsel. Um, that's, that's one of my only concerns, because I, I, I hear you, Deputy Mayor, and I'm, I'm on, I've been on that wavelength as well, but I just want to be mindful too, so...
Um, is there an estimate? I know that, uh, Madam Attorney, you have someone usually that you would go to on, on issues like this, like employee issues, ethic issues?
Well, your motion is to have the city manager handle this. I have no idea who the city manager is going to hire, what their rates are going to be, so I can't speak to that.
Copy that.
I have one question.
Yes.
Is this before we do our actions tonight, or are we still doing our actions tonight and doing this?
We, we've done already the censorship. So, right now, I got a motion and a second. Um, would you consider having our attorney do it, or?
I just, with the potential of the uh, of the lawsuit beaten thread, and I just think for a path moving forward in clarity that any conflict of interest that you have outside counsel manage that through the city manager's office.
So should, should this, our city attorney be uh, better equipped to make that determination? Uh, by, is all I'm saying, like, she, she handles with legality, so wouldn't it be wise for her to decide, okay, I'll, I'll farm this out, or I can do this myself?
Yeah, I just think, I just think outside counsel just provides a, a different picture view that can a, either completely absolve Councilman Landryman of any issues, or if there in fact is, then it's done by an outside counsel.
You're looking for an independent...
Yeah, independent investigation.
Okay, um, would you authorize the city attorney, I guess, to make that determination as opposed to the city manager?
On what, counsel to hire?
Yes.
Yeah, it would.
Well, well, ma'am, now, now you're back in play. So I guess my, my, my question is, because I, I hear what Councilman Johnson's saying, right? Um, my, my question is, you typically have someone that could handle those type of investigations? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The city currently contracts with, at this point, three separate labor unemployment law firms.
And do you see where Deputy Mayor Jaffe's talking about an independent investigation? Uh, that way it absorbs anyone on, on this council. Is there any merit to that?
I will just state, prior to the last council meeting, because the city local government bar is a very close-knit bar. Commission on Ethics regularly comes to our meetings. We have contacts within the Commission on Ethics, in which there've been a number of times you all have, um, items. I tell you, I'll call because we have the ability to call. I did. And so, so certainly, this council can decide if they, I called, Senator Mayfield called, Representative Mayfield called. You certainly can have, we can pay someone to make the call, or we can pay someone to give their opinions of what they feel the Commission on Ethics might do. That's certainly your, your call, but there has been some due diligence done regarding that.
So you making the call does not affect if, if there's a, a pending lawsuit simultaneously?
Sir, I made the call before the last council meeting.
Okay.
And you know from items you have, if there's anything where there's maybe an ethics violation, I will call the Commission on Ethics. I'll give them the factual basis, and there's an attorney there that does assist, um, local government attorneys and local government officials in those matters. And I did that prior to the last council meeting.
Okay. So was there a formal letter done directly to the ethics? I'm, I'm not clear as to, no.
Sir, based upon our conversations with the Commission on Ethics, there, at least from the advice that I received, there did not seem to be a path for the same advice, I believe, that, uh, Mayfield received as well.
Uh, I'm, I'm tracking. Now, what you're trying to do is have an independent, okay. Well, are you good with the city attorney looking at that instead of the city manager?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, are you good with that amendment? Okay, so I got, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor, signed by Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
So passes three to one or four to one?
Well, a no vote is a yea vote.
I, I didn't, huh?
A no vote is a yea vote, right? Four to one?
I said aye.
Oh, aye, okay, so four to one. Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney, you're clear for takeoff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
That concludes my report.
No, there's something else you have to share.
I, I made my announcement first.
Did you?
See.
Okay, as you were. Just in case, for the record, he's attending the Orlando, October 24th and 25th. I have nothing to report, but I am going to follow up after Mr. Morton. Carry on, Mr. Morton.
Just one item to report tonight. Uh, staff, deputy mayor, and I'm not sure if any other council, uh, and the mayor, excuse me, potentially are traveling to Tallahassee sometime between November 3rd and November 6th uh, for a visit to conduct city business. If there's any other council members that are intending on going, uh, we do have to announce that. If you want to announce it tonight, if you're still considering. Uh, but for now, I have deputy mayor, staff, and mayor potentially traveling to Tallahassee for city business, November 3rd to the 6th.
Anyone else?
I will check my schedule and get back with you.
Okay, so that's a tentative yes for Councilman Hammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Smith?
Nothing further.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.